All right, welcome everyone to the nine twenty board meeting. As you can tell this room echoes quite a bit, so ask me to turn your electronic devices off or please vibrate. All silent would be best. We have five items on the agenda tonight, three are new, two are from our last meeting. As the applications are called by Mr. Harden, the chairman of the board, the applicant will come up and speak into the microphone to the board. Once they are seated, anyone for or against the application, they have the right to come up and speak, and then... The applicant will then be able to come up and address any of his comments or current concerns. All the comments, concerns, your presentation won't be directed to the board. We ask that everyone maintain composure, because sometimes everybody can get a little elevated, but we are here to listen to everyone that is here to speak tonight. Mr. Harden?
Thank you, Ralph. Good evening to you. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, the first order of business is that, uh, please turn your phones off so I can't hear them, or even if the old stuff of pagers or whatever, turn those off so I can't hear them. Uh, the other thing is, as you can tell, it just does not resonate in here with verbiage. So, when you come forward to speak into the microphone to the board, please elevate your voice a little bit so the folks behind you can hear. Don't be surprised if I ask you to raise your voice. And don't be surprised if I tell you to quit raising your voice. It might happen. Uh, okay, with respect to the sound, the gentleman with the black dark beard back there. Yes, sir, you. If you can't hear us, you should, you raise your hand and, and, and you're the indicator. All right? Yeah, thank you, thank you very much. Yeah. All right. First order of business is the, uh, the minutes of, uh, oh, by the way, we haven't met for sixty days, folks. We, we go sixty days without meeting, take holidays off, allow you guys to relax and take it easy on your applications and, and not get stressed out in the holiday period when you're trying to do them. Uh, so we're here for the first time, one of eleven scheduled meetings for the year. Uh, that's ten scheduled meetings of the year, yeah. Ten scheduled meetings, I'm pretty sure this year is going to be eventful. So, if any of you, uh, are interested in, uh, public discord and interaction with respect to property rights and zoning in a fair environment, please come back the fourth Tuesday of every month at six P M. Or for those in the military, eighteen hundred hours. Um, so, the, uh, minutes of the November twenty-sixth meeting, the chair would accept a motion at this time.
She'll move.
Oh, we want the motion to accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn with the second. Any additional discussion, folks? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Motion carries four to zero. All right, that's boring stuff. Let's get going on this thing. We have application number thirty-one thirty-six, which is a lot split rezoning of a parent tract of twenty-three more or less acres with the current zoning designation of agriculture into a five point three more or less acre tract and an eighteen more or less acre tract, both to obtain residential rural zoning designation, both to obtain residential rural, uh, rural zoning designation. This is submitted by William Irwin on behalf of Ronald, Lynn, and Lori D. Baker, who are requesting the zoning actions described above on a tract of land located in the west half of the southeast quarter of the northeast quarter of the section twenty-seven, township forty-six, range thirty-one, Cass County, Missouri. We all know this is two-two-five-zero-nine, east one-hundred-eighty-ninth street, Pleasant Hill, Missouri. Who represents this application? Please come forward and tell us your story, sir.
Uh, hello all, I'm William Irwin. I'm here on behalf of Ronald and Lori Baker.
What's your name again, sir?
William Irwin. Yep. With Irwin Construction.
Thank you.
We're here to submit the application for the split of the twenty-three acres on the corner of one-hundred-eighty-ninth and Baker Lane. Okay? Uh... For the split of the twenty-three acres into the eighteen and the five, for the purpose of single-family home on the five acres, potential for the eighteen acres to have the single-family home.
Okay. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. All right, thank you. Okay, if anyone here that would like to speaker, uh, speak in favor of the application, please come forward. If anyone here would like to speak against the application or has questions of saying, please come forward. All right, Valerie?
They've done everything that's been asked of them.
Okay. All right, you guys have any questions, Valerie? All right, the chair would accept the motion at this time.
I make a motion to approve application... Three-one-three-six, as submitted along with the submitted bank report, report respectively.
All right, Mo- Michael's made the motion to accept three-one-three-six as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Lynn with the second. All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? The motion carries four to zero. What's the date?
March fifth, at noon.
Third? Third floor?
Yes.
Mr. Irwin, we're a recommending body. Okay, we have recommended approval of your application. Uh, there's a meeting on March fifth at noon on third floor where the, uh, important people make the decisions. Please be there to represent your application.
Uh, thank you.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. All right, application three-one-three-seven, conceptual special use permit for a billboard on a thirteen more or less acre tract of land currently zoned residential rural. This is submitted by Jennifer Pfizer, who is requesting the zoning actions described above. Located on a tract of land being part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section thirteen, township forty-five, range thirty-one, Cass County, Missouri. And commonly known as two-four-eight-zero-zero, east two-hundred-twenty-seventh street, Harrisonville, Missouri. And you are?
I am Jennifer Pfizer.
No, good evening to you.
Hi. Am I loud enough?
We'll find out. How's it going?
All right, um, I'm Jennifer Pfizer. I own the property, uh, at the corner of two-twenty-seventh and seven highway. I would like to get a special use permit to have a billboard there at the corner. Um, where the billboard is placed, it's actually been there for, accidentally, kind of for, um, a couple of months now, and it sits back far enough from the road. It doesn't impede any traffic, um, from either two-twenty-seventh or seven highway.
Did you say it's already there?
It is. I, uh, yes. Um, there was a bit of a...
How did that happen?
It was a bit of a mix-up on what I was supposed to do. Um, when I originally called, I was, I was told to get a MoDOT permit, um, which was, I don't know, probably called last summer. Um, I originally was told to get a MoDOT permit. MoDOT doesn't require a permit on seven highway, so we went ahead and built it and then realized we need to get the special use permit.
You thought we didn't matter, that's what you're suggesting.
I, that's not what I, I said. I, I called. I just didn't have all the information.
That directs a little bit.
I'm sorry.
It's all right. So, how long's it been up?
Uh, since September, I think.
What's the size of it?
So, there, it's, it's built to have a four by twelve sign put on it. Um, so I think I have in there, it's about ten feet tall, so that the sign is up off the ground, um, and then it's twelve feet wide.
Any questions? All right, now, uh, if, I forgot to tell everybody this part. If, if folks come up to have questions about the application or speak against the application, the applicant will take, will so note those situations, and that applicant at the end of the negative session will have the ability to come up and address the concerns and the negativities. Okay? So pay attention. Anyone here like to speak in favor of this application? This is in favor now. Right? Come on.
If you could just sign in.
Sure.
Or let's sign, but for here, the...
Do you want more information? Do you want more?
Your address, yeah. And then the application's three-one-three-seven.
Three-one-three-seven.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sherry Peters. My husband and I...
Sherry what?
Sherry Peters. Uh, my husband and I own two of the four corners there at two-twenty-seventh and seven highway where Jennifer would like to put the billboard. Um, like I said, Jennifer said the billboards have been up for several months, so we've driven by it countless times and, uh, see that there's no problems with the setback or any kind of visibility issues. So, we, we have no problem with the billboard proceeding as proposed.
You say it's been up several months?
I think so.
Okay, let's...
Well, it's just the structure. There's no billboard there.
No signage yet?
Yeah, there's no signage. It's wood.
It's wood.
Just empty wood that you can see through.
It's ready. It's ready.
It's ready for that, or tomatoes, or whatever, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's see. Any questions? Thank you. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody here has questions about the application or wants to speak against the application? Please come forward and give us your name. We need you to sign in too, sir, please.
Good evening, my name's John Mathis. And, uh, I drive through that intersection probably a dozen times a week. Uh, the intersection's kind of a poor intersection. It's at an odd angle. Uh, you can't hardly, you have to look over your right shoulder in order to see one way. Uh, you've got a limited, uh, sightline, given the way the road lays, especially if you're in a car. Uh... There's been a lot of accidents at that intersection. There was a fatality last year. Uh... I see billboards as being distractions. And at that dangerous inter- intersection, I don't think it needs any more distractions. And I'm also worried about if, if it's approved for one corner, then does that set precedent for the, uh, other three corners to be built up and signs also? And so, I am not for it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Okay, anybody else like to speak against the application? Please come forward.
Do you both mind, husband and I need to speak separately?
Bob, can Hunter's husband come up and speak at the same time?
Or would you rather us speak separately? How does that hit you?
Yeah, you can both come up.
No, you can both.
Both come up together?
Yeah, that's fine.
Then, I said, most to go. Wow, you get two for one.
Yeah.
All right. I will do the handwriting. You want that, so I will tell you that.
Do you want to take my notes for me too, then, please?
No, she's not doing it. Her handwriting sucks. It's okay. It's why I have something else. And this is thirty-one thirty-seven, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm April Riley. This is my husband, Tim Riley.
Hello.
We were here, we were given notice. Our property sits within a thousand feet of the special permit in question. We're just right across the road. Uh, we are against this for the same reason as the gentleman who spoke. We do see this as an extreme safety issue, not only to those individuals who live in the neighborhood, but for those who probably infrequently, even more so, who go down seven highway and then two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh. I did bring pictures to show you what we see as the sightline issue that has been spoken up. So, according to... Oh, okay. So, the structure that is being proposed will actually impede the sightline that is there. The skeleton that is there is already impeding the current sightline. So, if you're familiar with seven highway, we know that there are the S corners and the highway sits at an angle. So, the stop sign must be set back. You have to be behind that stop sign in order to see if you have oncoming traffic. If you are to be at behind the stop sign and where this billboard is proposed to be, you cannot see traffic coming. You have to move in front of the stop sign. At that point, then, you are in oncoming traffic's turn lane, whether that be coming from the south or the north. Seven highway, two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh are frequented by trash trucks, dump trucks, rain trucks, combines, you, it's a rural area. They need the right-of-way in order to turn.
So, it, it's at, it's at an angle. It's not a perpendicular intersection. And so, it is, first off, very tricky, like the gentleman said. I have, in the twenty-five years that we lived there, I have come upon two deaths myself there. Uh, and I would say at least a dozen wrecks, serious wrecks, that have happened. And I have seen one firsthand when it happened right in front of me. It happens a lot. It's one of the most dangerous intersections in the county. We went to the...
Sheriff.
Sheriff, and they said, "Oh, we know about that intersection." They said, "We were wanting to get data from it," and they said, "We recommend you go into the state patrol unit," because they said, "They usually take over," because it's usually the major, uh, major wrecks.
Unfortunately, with just ten days' notice of this hearing, the highway patrol requires sixty days in order to accumulate data for a specific intersection point like that. So, but if you would like to see the pictures that I took from my car, I'm happy to get them.
Sure, pass them around. Show them like there. Pass them around.
So, that is the stop sign which you stop behind. That is from the angle of my car stopped there and stopped next to you. You can see, you cannot see that stop sign. It's hard to tell in front of it. You can see how far it's... And unfortunately, this is still in the area to the young child. And it's not that we are opposed to anyone wanting to monetize their property. We're not opposed to that. We're just opposed to where this particular billboard is.
It's a dangerous intersection.
It is just a dangerous intersection. And being there for twenty-five years, which is one of our community, and anyone who travels in our community is safe. And you can keep close to them. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Uh, yes. Sorry, I forgot. You might ask us questions.
So, there's no way to understand or to enumerate which directions the accidents, or cars were coming when there were accidents, or anything like that? And then said specifically, is there any way to say that this particular board and location would be a, a, a high precipitator, in your opinion, of, of accidents?
Would it?
Or are we just surmising, guessing? I value your opinion.
Right, no. Can accidents happen from going from one side to the other side of seven highway? Of course they can. I mean, there is a sign on the east side of two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh that I would love taken down, because I find it to be a hazard as well. Um, I do believe it will increase the number of accidents, given the reasons that we have said, because it decreases the sightline of which you can see oncoming vehicles. I would love to say everyone travels seven highway at fifty-five miles per hour. They do not. There is no shoulder on seven highway, and we know that is not a Cass County issue. That is a Missouri DOT issue, MoDOT issue. That corner also, I don't, it's hard to tell there, I could get my phone out, has an extreme, um, I don't know what you'd call it, ten, where it drops. It basically is a non-ditch.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a, a cute angle, le- that's less than a ninety degrees. It's around about a seventy-degree angle, and it's hard for people that are coming from the Pleasant He- Hill area, heading south and then turning west, because it's a sharper corner than a ninety-degree. And just...
Their tire will drop.
They, they fall off. There was just one here about two months ago, right after Christmas, that went off, and that tow truck had to come out, and it did some damage. People were okay, but there, it's a dangerous corner. There's a lot of accidents.
So, again, people pulling in front of that stop sign to try to see cuts off people's inability to make that turn correctly, getting onto two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh.
So, if you're saying, if you're going east on, uh, two-hundred-and-twenty-seventh, then you have to pull out on seven highway before you can see whether the traffic's coming or not?
You have to pull in front of the stop sign?
You don't have to pull out into the traffic. You've got to get right there at it.
Oh, okay, so...
Yeah, you're having to basically pull in front of the stop sign in order to see around the billboard, to see if it's safe to pull across the highway.
How, how far back from seven highway is that stop sign?
Hmm.
It's a good question. Uh, it would be just a guess. I probably should mark it off, set it off. But, uh, the stop sign is backwards just for that reason, because people have to, those semis or big trucks coming in from the south, going north and turning back west, they have to take a big area, as well as the ones from Pleasant Hill going to, uh, to the west. They've got, really got to come into the opposing lane to make that corner, because that's a short, sharp corner. It's, it's a tough intersection, and I, I travel more than once every day, and you have to back up, be ready to back up if you've got a truck that's coming your way. And so, everybody's kind of got to work together to back up.
So, so basically, whether this, uh, billboard is there or not, you still have to pull in front of the stop sign to see the traffic on seven highway?
It's worse with the billboard, absolutely, but yes.
But without the billboard, you still have to?
Sometimes, yeah, because there's that tree that needs to be taken down, too, as you can see.
Do you guys want to see what the intersection looks like?
So, are you suggesting it's a MoDOT, MoDOT design flaw?
Well, I, I, I mean, the way the roads are, I mean, seven highway, I don't know if you can ever get that changed, the way it comes out of those S corners and going back to, to the south. And two-twenty-seventh is a perfect east and west road. Uh, so I don't know how you change it other than make things wider, possibly.
Yeah.
I do know that when we met through the sheriff's office, they said, "Oh, it's one of the worst intersections in the county."
I, I just don't want to see anything that makes it worse than what it is.
Okay. You want to show that to the group?
And if it meant to, for the people that are, you guys are listening, if it meant, we would continue this and you guys could go out and look at it before we decide on it, that might be an option too. I don't know how you guys would like this, okay?
That's one of the options.
So, where is the billboard? Okay. Now, how far will it be off to the corner?
Okay, you guys...
Okay. Thank you so much for listening to us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak against the application? Okay, Ms. Pfizer, you can come forward and, uh, answer some of these questions that have come up and concerns, and we'll see what happens.
Logan, um, so to address some of the questions, um, the location of where it's currently at, I also, I don't know if I threw this out there at the beginning, but if it is deemed that is not the right spot for it, it's just a wood structure. I don't, I have eighteen hundred feet of frontage along the seven highway. So, if it would be better to be moved further, further north along seven, I am open to doing that as well. Um, to the point about the, the traffic being impeded, um, I thought this was brought up, but you do actually, regardless of whether the billboard is there, you do actually have to pull in front of the stop sign in order to be able to see oncoming traffic. So, it's, the only traffic that's being impeded sightline is cars that may be two or three in line, rather than the person that's act- actually pulling out onto the highway. It's, I, I, I've lived there for fifteen years. I do know that there are accidents there. Um, a lot of them come from people coming south on seven that turn too quickly onto two-twenty-seventh. Um, and they end up in my ditch, actually, generally, um, because they've made too tight of a turn. Um, I think a couple have come from, they're traveling east on two, is that right? East on two-twenty-seventh, and they blow the stop sign there, because it's kind of at the bottom of a hill. But that, again, wouldn't have anything to do with the billboard either. Um, I, I don't want to cause a safety concern there, so I am open to moving that if that is the, the route that I would, you know, be approved for. So, I'm, I'm open to...
Well, tell us about your thoughts on moving it, how far and what?
Uh, oh, and there was a tree that was mentioned. I, that was actually in my plans as well, to tear that tree down this spring. Um, so that would be another thing taken out of the line of sight.
Yeah.
Um, so I could potentially move, I could move the billboard structure a couple hundred feet from, you know, another, I think it's probably about thirty feet in right now, maybe not that far, twenty-five feet in.
Uh, are you under any pressure with respect to a user of that location?
I, since October, I've had people that have, yes, like, I have somebody that wants to be...
Is there a demand for that, build that board area?
Yes.
Are there any other banner signs out there right now?
There's currently, uh, one up there, I think two. Um, they're just temporary ones that are sitting out. They're just staked in.
How long will they be down, or be up before they're taken out?
Well, I can take those down.
Okay. Will those eventually be on whatever structure?
Potentially. One of them is, one is just sitting there right now.
Okay.
What's your thoughts on folks? You want to make a decision tonight?
Yeah.
All right. They're, they're willing to listen to your changes tonight, so they can go forward and get to your board up, possibly.
Okay. Um, do you have a preference for, um, distance?
It's your operation. We refer to you and your suggestions.
Okay, so if I moved it... What do you think, a hundred feet? What, how far?
How far is the tree?
If I tore the tree down and then moved it kind of in that general area, I don't know how many feet. Uh, yes, and moved, move it back so that it's not in the same spot. Is, so that makes, oh, here's an area.
Yeah, is this the tree that you're talking, well, I keep touching the screen. There's this tree right here, kind of?
Yes.
Is that the tree you're talking about?
Yes.
So, that tree is about a hundred and eighty feet right now from the corner of your property that was...
Okay, so it's probably currently right around here. Um, actually, so if we put it... So, this is a hundred and seventy-five feet from here to there?
Well, I didn't get the corner, so I, if I had to guess, it's probably from that corner of your property, about a hundred and eighty feet.
Okay. So, what if we did, like... A hundred and fifty feet from the corner?
And then how far off to the west of your property line, do you think? We can get a better idea of this, measure. Um, it looks like this is kind of a low line, if that gets you...
Yeah, I'll have to do, there's a water line right here, so it'll have to be behind the water line, then, um, because I think I...
Let's do a hundred and fifty feet this way.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry.
So... So, the tree that, she was talking, this tree here?
Yeah, see, our plan was to do a billboard here, which doesn't block anything, by the way. Um, and then we... Yeah, see, our plan was to do a billboard here, which doesn't block anything, by the way, um, and then we had one, we were gonna put here and here, but, uh, we've already cut those down, so. The stop sign, can you see it?
No, but I think it's like right in here somewhere.
Yeah.
Everybody has to pull up here, you cannot, because this, you can't, you can't see down here, so everybody has to, so that's nonsense.
See, I'm actually, I actually think that this is gonna cause more of, like, moving it this direction.
Well, it's right here, I mean, how far back, look, here's what you have, you have the hi, the highway is here, and this is here, this isn't even close to, to the here.
Yes. Yeah.
So the whole, the whole thing with this line of sight is bullshit, this, well, I'm just saying, you have to see, if you're here and you have to see down here, you can't, you can't park behind it, you can't, uh, stop behind it, you have to pull up, anybody that's ever driven this, excuse me, um, knows.
The thing is, we need to come up with a decision.
Yeah, I know, so let's.
Okay, so let's do this, yeah, because we've already got a lot of these, so how about right here?
I, I can't see where you're pointing at.
I think it's about here, is that what you're saying?
How about right here?
So I was gonna do it like, um, like one twenty five issue, this is one seventy five.
Yeah, okay.
So like one fifty feet here, and then, like, I don't know what this line, that's the imaginary.
That's about twenty seven, yeah, twenty five feet from there.
Twenty five feet from.
Sure, that was that sound, you got me there.
It's gonna be up to them, but I don't want you to have to go on the ground.
Okay.
Understood.
So we're gonna move it a hundred and fifty feet from the corner.
Which direction?
North, and then twenty five feet back from.
To the west.
To the west.
Going down, please?
And if I peek back from, uh.
From Seven.
She, they're proposing a hundred and fifty feet north of their property line, twenty five feet west of their east property line.
All right, and remove the tree?
Yes.
Okay, and how will we amend that, do you want that amended in the, uh, motion?
If, yes, if that's, everyone's agreeable to that, we'll amend it.
If you want to run with that and see what happens. Okay, tell us through the mic from what you propose to us.
Okay, we are proposing a hundred and fifty feet north and twenty five feet west.
And remove the tree?
And remove the tree.
All right, what else?
Is it gonna be lit?
Uh, I hadn't planned for it to be. I don't know if that's one way or another, makes it better or worse for me, but.
If it's not lit, then there'd be less of a distraction at night, if it was lit, then it would be, could be, taken that way, so no lighting?
Oh, okay, yeah, I was not planning. No lighting.
No light. Yeah, let's face it, this is MoDOT's fault for creating intersections.
I would agree with you, yeah.
Just so you all remember where I stand on it, uh, so, okay, anything else?
No.
All right, thank you. All right, that's the end of that session, uh, Valerie, any comments or commentary?
Uh, no, the only question I had, they answered, and that was about the temporary banners that they have currently, and she said those are coming down, so that was it.
Okay. All right, so when we make the motion, folks, add the three, uh, changes, the three parameter changes. Northwest of tree, okay, so Chair, Lynn, you have a question?
No.
Okay, uh, the Chair would accept the motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve application thirty one thirty seven, after it's moved to a hundred and fifty feet north, twenty five feet in, and the tree cut down.
All right, Obie went first to approve the application thirty one thirty seven S, submitted with the changes, uh, with respect to a hundred and fifty feet north, twenty five feet west, and the tree removed, was there a second?
Second.
Lynn with the second, any other questions? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Extinctions, motion carries four to zero, uh, recommending approval of the application, okay, Jennifer, where are you? Okay, all right, so we're recommending body, this application will be hea- heard March fifth at noon on third floor, with the, uh, the big guys, Fisher. All right, be there. Any of you people that have got to go to, you can go to it too, it's not applicants. Okay, application thirty one thirty eight is a subdivision, preliminary and final plat to be known as subset Ridge, a parent tract of fifty-five more or less acres with the current zoning designation of agriculture to be divided into six lots, consisting of fi- five, uh, nine more or less acres and a five acre tract, all to obtain residential rural zoning designation. This is submitted by Clearfork Holdings LLC, who are requesting these actions described above, located on the land in part of the south half of the southeast quarter of section twenty-two, township forty-five, range thirty, Cass County Reserve. We know it as State Route K and east two hundred thirty-fifth Street Pleasant Hill, who's representing this?
My name is Doug Roth, Carol and I are the only owners in Clearfork Holdings, it's our farmland owning company.
Okay.
We're planning to, uh, bought a farm that has some good topsoil on it that we plan to farm, but it also has some marginal productive ground with some trees we thought was better suited to rural residential, so we've asked for a, a six lot subdivision to be created, and, uh, for those in the audience that aren't aware, we did have to do a stormwater study because of the number of lots in the subdivision, we had civil engineer do the stormwater analysis at the, an engineering company, uh, employ, we employed an engineering company to make a recommendation to Water District Number Nine, to make sure we didn't negatively impact their water delivery system, and then we worked with Co-, uh, MoDOT to make sure that the two entrances we had proposed on K Highway were safe, uh, with sight distance and intersection, uh, due to, due to elevation or any of the other intersections, so.
How'd that go?
Uh, it was a little bit painful and drawn out, but we got there, so.
I thought so.
Yeah, that you, yeah, you and I shared.
There's MoDOT in it.
Yeah, yeah, there's MoDOT, same, same group, same group, but we, we made them, maybe not happy, but they signed off on it for us.
How things go with the Water District?
Uh, they were, they were great, I'd not had to ask for an engineering thing before, but it was close enough, he didn't, he, the, the local manager wasn't confident to say, yes, we've got enough water, so, but that went well, so. Um, we're asking.
Do you know all the standard requirements, minimums, house minimums and all that, what kind of housing?
We, we.
You been through all that with Valerie and, and staff?
Si, Valerie's been very helpful with that, yeah, we, we don't have any subdivision rules regarding the type of structure other than the county regulations, so we haven't banned barn dominions, we haven't said it has to be stone front or paved driveways, we haven't, our subdivision that we're pr- uh, proposing tonight does not have any restrictions outside of the ones that the county would, would, uh, provide.
Is that because why?
Uh, because I.
You just run out of time and wore out?
No, I, I just don't like people telling me what to do, so I don't want to dictate that to a homeowner.
Yeah. I just told you, you're gonna be surprised.
Yeah.
So excuse me, I, I forewarn you.
Okay, what kind of surprises do you think?
Dream up. You, you can imagine what these people are gonna come in and try and build on your subdivision.
Yeah.
Okay?
We will, we will try to embrace for that, okay?
Yeah, serious, all right, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah. All right, any of you, anybody here like to speak in favor of this, uh, subdivision? Anybody that'd like to speak against it or has questions regarding saying, come forward, give us your name, please?
Is it thirty one thirty eight, oops, okay. Good evening, uh, my name's Chastity Danner, formerly Young, and I live at east, uh, or three one, six oh one, east two hundred and thirty-fifth street, so that's just down the street, uh, from the proposed, uh, addition, um, I do have some questions, uh, I, I'm not crazy about having a bunch of new neighbors, just to be real honest about it, um, and you mentioned, first of all, the intersection at K and two thirty-five, I would consider also dangerous. Um, two hundred and thirty-fifth street is not really well maintained by the county, um, we do have a road grader out there pretty often, and I appreciate that they do what they can, but the, uh, where the road meets the highway, there's a significant drop off from the highway onto the road, on both sides of the road.
That's MoDOT, so MoDOT maintains within ten to twenty feet of their state routes.
Great, it's still a terrible intersection, and I, I pull in and out of there, uh, multiple times a day, I pull, uh, a trailer a lot of times, and it's, and it's very unsafe, um, and so having more cars there is, is gonna make it even more dangerous. Part of the reason that it's dangerous is there's a significant hill on the north, on the north side of the, uh, that's okay, there's a, there's a, there's a kind of like a little, a little hop of a hill, um, coming from the north towards, uh, towards two thirty-five on K, and you can't see from two thirty-five over that hill, and by the time you get out there, if there is a car, you're, you could be in big trouble, my sister-in-law had an accident in that location a few years back, um, you know, and totaled out with an Eman, uh, so.
All right, so, he's, you've heard him say he's met with MoDOT.
I did hear that.
When he comes back up, we'll have him address that, uh, maybe in specific, if MoDOT, if MoDOT has backmoed, addressed things like that, we'll find out.
Yeah. And, and that, and one of my other questions was, uh, would there be entrances onto two thirty-five as well, or would it only be on K Highway, I, you know, how, how,
Good question, we'll find out.
How will that work, um, and then I did have questions as well, and you guys brought it up about, uh, what ty- types of homes would be there? Um, a few years back, another addition, I guess it's an addition, um, um, K and two was approved, and now it has what I would call tiny houses. Uh, man, that'd be lovely, you know, I just really think that having some kind of, um, standards or something.
Well, we have standards here, it doesn't have to be, they can't go below, we have standards, uh, you can read them online or.
Yeah.
Drive over to three hundred and seventy.
Yeah, well, and, you know.
The site that she's speaking of came through the special use process to have smaller units as temporary living quarters.
Storage sheds.
Kind, kind of a church or another church.
Yes, yeah, the old church there, it came to.
Fourteen, fourteen.
Something like that is what it'll be, yeah.
Looks like they're putting more in now, I think, there's a.
Yeah, they got permits for it.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's signs out, so.
Yeah.
So that answers that for you, keep going.
So would, so those would be approved then, those are allowable?
They would have to go through a whole special hearing process for that.
For each one?
Just like this again, all the way through.
Otherwise, the minimum is a thousand square feet.
Yeah, yeah, so I just think that there are some traffic concerns, there are safety concerns on the roads, and, um, if there are gonna be additional homes built in, on that corner, there probably needs to be a significant improvement to two hundred thirty-fifth street.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. Okay, anyone else who'd like to provide commentary, speak against it, or have questions? All right, Mr. Roth, oh, the Reillys, are you coming forward to speak? You're leaving while you can.
Yeah, the, uh, the primary concern, I think, was the entrances, where the entrances would be, and, uh, so our compromise with the Department of Transportation on K Highway would be two shared entrances, so our four lots that face K Highway, uh, at, at their property lines, they would share a thirty foot wide standard residential entrance. And so those would be four of those lots, the other two would be a little over a quarter of a mile east on two thirty-fifth, um, and to dress her specifically, she'll know where the trees are, go, uh, the drawing. So they'll be, they'll be about a quarter of a mile off of two, so, or off of K, rather, I'm, I'm missp- off of K. So those two will be county entrances on a county road, and we'll, we will be adding, theoretically, if we can sell the places, we'll add two homes that would use that two thirty-five and K Highway intersection. And I think that was the primary concerns.
Yeah, we can't do anything about real conditions, that's somebody else, some other.
So, but that's, that was the compromise we reached with MoDOT was to, I will also say, both of those are on the crest, if I can address her also, the crest is a little hill, so they, they have high visibility, we had, we had to move the property line and rearrange that, so that MoDOT was happy that they had good line of sight everywhere, so I'm aware of the intersection, I'm aware of the problem with the, the, uh, the, uh, with the line of sight at two thirty-five, all of this is documented on the survey that we submitted, and I don't know if the letters that went out have that drawing, but that is available for you as, as the recommending board, so.
All right, thank you.
You bet, thanks.
Appreciate everybody's on that, Valerie, comments?
Uh, as he stated, he get, did get part of his stormwater through a local engineer, he did work with the Water District and MoDOT, they did, uh, make some changes from what they originally wanted to, to suffice for MoDOT, and get it in the most safe place possible.
Good, very good, any questions of Valerie, Board? Okay, Chair would accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve thirty one thirty eight for a subdivision known as Sunset Ridge, as submitted along with a submitted plan board report, respectively.
Thank you, Obie has, uh, recommended approval of application thirty one thirty eight for the subdivision, is there a second? Mike with the second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, extensions, motion carries four to zero in favor, all right, uh, March fifth, noon, third floor, we have recommended approval of your application, folks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, application, uh, this is own business, folks, application thirty one thirty four, if you're keeping track of it numerically. Uh, application number three one three four, conceptual and special use permit for an event space venue on a hundred twenty-nine more or less acre tract zone currently is agriculture. This is submitted by Matthew Brown on behalf of himself, Indiana Brown, who are requesting the zoning actions described above, located on tract of land in part of the northwest quarter of the section thirty-three, township forty-four, range thirty-three, Cass County, we know it as one four zero one, east a hundred ninety-fifth street. Mr. Brown?
Yes, it is. Good to see you. Good to see you, thank you. Okay, so as I said, my name's Matt, Matt Brown, but first let me just give a little background on me, I, several decades ago, I graduated from Arizona State University with a bachelor's in business management, uh, so not only do I have many years of general business experience, but I've run another successful, a successful small business since two thousand and six. Uh, regarding the wedding event industry, I've been researching and planning and studying the event industry for about the last two and a half years, and in that time, we participated in many wedding industry events, where we consulted with seasoned veterans, we visit other event venues, at focus groups with couples who either recently had a wedding or were planning one, and we've also virtually viewed hundreds of other event spaces, both in Kansas City and across the United States, so as a result of our research, we are committed to designing and building an elegant, high-end facility with timeless, traditional styling, specifically built to, uh, captivate affluent couples and individuals who are looking for a luxurious event experience. Uh, with this in mind, we chose to work with Homily Construction, uh, due to their long history in construction, as well as the fact that they've built four other event spaces, and have extensive knowledge to design and build a high-quality product that's also low impact to the property and low impact to the neighborhood. In fact, uh, the we- main reason that we chose them is because they designed and built a really beautiful wedding event venue in Smithville called White Iron Ridge, and just as a side note, it's actually situated near, uh, a housing development that has three hundred homes in it with, with nearby residents, and so they can live in harmony, uh, with the three hundred home sites, uh, so the pro- proposed use will be as a wedding venue, our plan is to renovate the existing fifty-four hundred, sixty square foot home and include a new forty-seven hundred square foot, three hundred occupant capacity banquet room addition, and, uh, so we're asking for three hundred capacity total for the property, so whether the three hundred are inside or outside, just three hundred. And then we altered the original plan for constructing a new freestanding facility, and the result of that change is that we'll have an even lower. And the result of that change is that we'll have an even lower impact on the area. Uh, some of the benefits of doing this are lower cost, quicker turnaround of the construction, uh, process. And it also keeps the activity and events in the center of our property versus being close to any of the property lines. Uh, one of the other modifications that we made based on, uh, uh, the, the meeting in November was that we eliminated the patio to the east side and just have a patio to the west side as well, which faces, uh, Holmes Road or, uh, the highway D. So, we'll, we'll almost exclusively have weddings, which typically occur on Saturdays, Fridays, and Sundays. Uh, rarely will there be an events during the weekdays of Monday through Thursday. Uh, and the average wedding size is a hundred and thirty-one, based on statistics from weddingwire.com, one of the largest, uh, wedding experts in the industry. And so, we feel like this is a reasonable parcel upon which to have a wedding venue, since like a number of other small businesses in the county will be lo- located close to Holmes, Holmes Road. And actually, a portion of our property touches the railroad that's next to Holmes Road or Highway D. And there are other businesses such as Johnson Farms, Plants and Pumpkins, Rock Hill Storage and U-Haul Leadership, Sneeze Barbecue, Jowden Public House, uh, the Lone Wolf Ranch Arena, which has seating for fifteen hundred. And those other event venues such as Silo Hills Farm and Sunset Ranch, which just re- just recently opened, uh, down Holmes Road, I think, just a couple miles down from us. And all of these businesses are similarly situated near Ho- on or near Holmes Road, and they also have residence, uh, locations nearby. And also, it seems based on our research that it's commonly accepted that wedding and event venues in the county can coexist really well with residents nearby. I stopped counting at about fourteen, fifteen, uh, other event spaces with similar occupancies throughout the county, uh, that are located in rural areas that have homes nearby. And I, I didn't count any smaller venues or, uh, venues that were more in the urban areas. And so, I've got a list of a few of them, I can just read the names and, and, uh, the number of guests at the websites say that they can comfortably, comfortably host. Also, like Silo Hills Farm, two hundred, Heartland Lodge, three hundred, the Channan Acres Wedding Venue, two hundred, Olive Branch, one fifty, Sunridge Event Venue, two fifty, Dogwood Gardens, two hundred, Sunset Ranch, uh, two hundred, Sycamore Ridge, Event Space, one fifty, the Barnet River Bend, two hundred, Big Iron Town, two fifty, Rogue Family Vineyard, two hundred, Davis Event Space, four hundred. And so, they're all similarly situated with various residential locations nearby. And they all seem to offer both indoor and outdoor ceremonies and recep- reception. So, I looked at them all, uh, you know, via the satellite view on, on Google to kind of gauge how close they were to residential locations nearby. So, as I previously mentioned, the weddings, average wedding size across the nation is a hundred and thirty-one. Uh, so for access to the venue, we will use the existing one-lane driveway. And then the egress will actually be near, be near the east side of the property off one ninety-fifth. So, this will create a separation approximately, uh, I think, thousand feet from the entrance and the exit, creating a safer ingress and acci- uh, ingress and egress from the property. And then, uh, to estimate the number of cars for a wedding with a hundred and thirty-one guests, I included a sample arrival chart in our proposed use, uh, document. So, you're certainly welcome to look at that. But basically, the, the sample arrival chart demonstrates that the vehicle arrival, arrivals are somewhat evenly distributed throughout the day, uh, significantly reducing the potential for traffic congestion in the surrounding area. So, key folks such as the, the venue staff, the bridal parties, and the vendors, you know, they all, all arrive well advance of the event itself, because they're preparing for it. And so, with staggered times, beginning as early as seven a.m. And then, close family members typically arrive about mid-afternoon and then followed by the guests, who are spread across about a forty-five minute window prior to the ceremony. And then importantly, only a small number of vehicles are expected to arrive in the final moments leading up to the event. So, this, this gradual, uh, and dispersed pattern of arrivals really ensures minimal, um, traffic impact as there's no sudden influx of vehicles at, at any one time, which allows for just smooth traffic flow and, and parking logistics throughout the day. But then next, I wanted to just speak briefly about the efforts I've made to be a, a good neighbor and, uh, you know, if approved, I'll be a great neighbor. That's just my nature. But, uh, so after we sent our initial hearing notice letters, I reached out to several of the neighbors whose telephone numbers that I had, asking if they wanted to come by and see the building plans, as well as discussing questions or concerns that they might have. And I ended up having three separate meetings with, uh, various folks who own property nearby. During those meetings, I just answered their questions and concerns and, and gave my, my true commitment to work with them to ensure that we're a good, we're good neighbors and the venue, the wedding venue would be positive, uh, for the area. I also made sure that everyone had my direct, uh, contact number, as well as email address, so that if any questions or issues came up, that they'd have the ability to reach out to me, me personally. So, I also let them know that they could feel free to share my contact information if there were any other folks who wanted to meet with me. And so, uh, I just want to take a couple minutes to address some of the concerns that I heard at both the meetings, uh, back in November and December, with, with the neighbors and the, the previous public meetings. So, one of the, uh, primary concerns was, uh, regarding possible noise. Um, and I think a, a lot of it was surrounding receptions. But typically, about ninety-five percent of all wedding receptions actually take place indoors due to potential weather, uh, concerns. Uh, because even like a fairly light wind, uh, can be disruptive with tablecloths and, and things like that. So, really, receptions are typically indoors versus outdoors. Unless there's, uh, uh, venues that don't actually have a large enough space, they might offer outdoor, uh, receptions. But, uh, on that, that rare occasion of an outside reception, any outdoor sound would be pointed to the west and the southwest, due to the way the property is configured and to how the, the building has been redesigned. And then, based on the elevation of the lake, any outdoor sound would be at some of the lowest points of the property, which should lessen the impact of the sound. And there, there would be some ceremonies that would be outside, but they typically are very short, typically less than about thirty minutes or so. So, they usually have a processional, a vows, and then finally a recessional at the end. So, pretty short amount of time for that. Um, and then although it would be extremely rare, we're asking for approval for any outdoor music to end no later than, uh, ten P.M. and the indoor music to end by eleven-thirty. And we'll advise couples that they must end by eleven P.M., just to be safe from a time, uh, sound standpoint. And we're gonna be engaging an acoustical company that specializes in noise mitigation and acoustical performance, so we can control, um, that, that ambient noise. They'll help us design the pro- the proper sound-resistant materials in the reception hall to dampen sound in the general area. And then, um, the building is, is located far from most neighbors, since we're, it's actually really in the center of our hundred-and-twenty-nine acre property. We'll have, uh, reasonable sound limits for any music, and that will ensure that our agreement between couples and the venue specifies that we have control over their volume level. Um, the, the property does already have quite thick vegetation and trees all, all surrounding most sides of the parcel, uh, which will help. But we are planning on, and once we get going, planting of, of lots of trees and plants, particularly along, um, uh, one of the fifth street as well, which will help with some of the sound concerns. Uh, and then, one of the other concerns we heard at the previous public meetings was regarding having alcohol and the potential problems related to it. So, while, while I understand the concerns, uh, we'll definitely abide by all the rules and regulations to ensure that it's done in a responsible way. Uh, we'll do it just like all the other venues, bars, and restaurants across the county, um, many of which are open seven days a week compared to our proposed use, which will mostly just be Saturday, uh, possibly Friday and Sunday. Another concern that came up was the possibility of trash, uh, blowing out of our property into the neighbor, neighboring areas. And I did mention that we'll work to ensure that that just doesn't happen. Uh, uh, we want to keep everything just extremely nice and, and very high-end. And we'll definitely be elevating the general look and appeal of the property across the board. Uh, and then, another concern was regarding the parking lot lighting and possible light pollution. So, we intend to install those, uh, the small ballard lights instead of the large gooseneck, uh, really tall lights. Uh, and the ballard lights are really a low-height lighting solution that provide the illumination or maintain a low, uh, profile aesthetic. And they illuminate the area and improve visibility. They're really, they look good, they're energy efficient, and their downward directed light reduces spillover into any unwanted areas. And so, and they'll only be on during the evenings when there's an event, and they won't look, won't likely run at all during the weekdays. And so, what are some of the benefits of having Spring Lake Wedding and Event Venue? Uh, first, increased local spending. Couples and guests, uh, often spend money on accommodations, dining, transportation, and other services in the area. It's a boost to local businesses. So, any wedding-related vendors, like florists, caterers, photographers, hair and makeup artists, et cetera, they all benefit from increased demand. And it creates jobs. Uh, venues require staff cooperations, events, maintenance, creating employment opportunities for local residents. And you plan to have at least four full-time employees and ten part-time employees as well. Uh, there's definitely a benefit to, uh, to the area through beautification of the property, as I mentioned earlier. Uh, it creates, uh, good tax revenue, generates sales tax, and also property tax that supports the community services and infra- infrastructure. And I think it would be a great space for Cass County residents to take advantage of. And, uh, next, out-of-town guests will contribute to building, uh, hospitality industry by booking hotels, dining at the restaurants, and exploring, uh, area attractions. And we also wish to partner with schools, nonprofits, and other community groups to support local causes. So, in conclusion, I was just, I was, when thinking about the most appropriate use for the hundred-and-twenty-nine acre property like Spring and Great Lake, uh, we've approached the process with a true sense of responsibility and have carefully considered its potential impact on the surrounding community. So, our vision is to create a space that seamlessly integrates with the areas, areas' character while offering a meaningful and valuable service to, to the couples, groups, and nonprofit organizations that it serves. So, from a purely impact-driven perspective, establishing a, a wedding and event venue is far less intrusive than other potential developments, such as subdividing the land, say into a lakefront housing community with two hundred and fifty to three hundred home sites. Uh, traffic studies from the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual show that a residential development of this size would generate approximately two thousand three hundred and sixty to two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two vehicle trips per day. And this would result in significantly higher traffic levels, increased noise, and a notable rise in general activity throughout the area. In contrast, uh, wedding venue represents one of the lowest impacts uses of the property, maintaining the area's tranquility while supporting the community in a meaningful way. At, at the last zoning meeting in, in November, we had, we had applied, uh, you know, in October, um, and our application passed, but we, we do need approval again, uh, since we, back then, we had changed our original plan from having, um, two separate wedding ve- venues, building a totally separate building, and then converting the existing home into a, a smaller venue. But we, we scaled that back and we aren't going to be building the, the new building, but just rather, um, doing some renovations within the, the home and adding a forty-seven-hundred square foot, uh, reception space onto it. So, all these, uh, factors just reinforce our belief that developing a wedding venue is one of the most thoughtful and beneficial uses of the property. And as I mentioned earlier, I'm, I'm fully committed to working collaboratively, uh, with, with the county, our neighbors, and the community folks to ensure that this project is not only minim- minimally disruptive, but also a meaningful and positive addition to the local area. Okay? Thank you.
Alright, uh, does the board have any questions this time?
Are you currently holding any events or?
No, I'm not.
Okay. The reason I asked, I saw you had a sign up on, uh, one fifty highway advertising for the project.
Yeah. I just had started doing some marketing because it takes so long to get it going. And, uh, couples are typically booking their weddings, uh, at, at, at somewhere around two years, eighteen months, uh, twelve months, as you'd be, so they're, they want to book just well. So, we just started some, some other things.
How many folks attended your, uh, neighborhood meetings? You said you held three?
I, I had three separate meetings. Let's see, I had, uh, four at the first one. And then I think we had, I think we had six people at the, uh, five or six, I can't quite remember. And then the other was just with a couple, one of the neighbors nearby. I think that's about right.
Any overall themes from those meetings you shared with us?
Um, kind of the concerns that, that I had brought up about sound, um, a- and that being one issue. The, uh, potential for, um, for, for trash and blowing, you know, throughout the area. Um, I think those were the main ones. I think someone had brought up the concerns of, uh, alcohol use and driving. And I just, really just tried to persuade everyone to say, look, we're gonna do our best to make sure that none of those are issues. We're gonna be a good neighbor, we're gonna take care of things, uh, and be good for the community.
The, the, the general methodology out in that part of Cass County, the trash pickup is weekly? That, do you anticipate using that same, uh, schedule?
Uh, I know we're gonna be getting a large dumpster. I don't know that I know the pickup schedule for that, but it'll be located close to the building itself. Uh, but it'll be a big, uh, roll-away dumpster. And I, I think we could probably, um, get them to pick it up more frequently if necessary. But, uh, I don't think we'll, uh, you know, either way, I think we'll have it be an issue. We'll make sure it's remedied.
That's a big issue to us. Board.
Yeah. But I, I definitely have tons of incentive to keep everything nice, right?
Any other questions?
It appears there are one home directed west, uh, that you're, have you talked to those people?
Yes, yes. In fact, I, they're in favor of it. They mentioned to me they were gonna write a letter, uh, that, uh, I don't know if it's something that could be read. I don't know. I might have a copy of it, but they're in favor of it. I'm okay with it.
Did you mention the, uh, indoor music times, uh, cessation time in the, in the outdoor?
Uh, yeah, I did. So, I said ten, uh, ten P.M. for any outdoor, um, eleven-thirty for any indoor. Uh, we're gonna advise the couples, though, that they need to end by eleven P.M. on the music.
Would you be at first, just go ahead and put that at the issue for eleven o'clock, it's eleven-thirty?
Uh, the only reason I made it eleven-thirty was just to have a little bit of wiggle room. If it, if it, what if I don't cut it off by, say, eleven oh five or something? I just didn't wanna, how about eleven fifteen? Would that be?
Yep, we want you to end at eleven.
Okay. I can end at eleven, that's fine.
Eleven's a little late for me, but we'd like it. I know you shook that back some.
Yeah, that's totally fine. We can make that happen.
That's the, uh, out, that's the indoor, indoor time.
Yes, yes, that's right.
Any other questions?
Didn't you say you already have weddings booked, or you're just making people wait here?
Uh, we're, we're starting to market and, and trying to get, get bookings at this, at this point. For like, uh, part of the problem is we don't know exactly when we're gonna be done with the construction. So, we're, we're talk, we're definitely talking to cus- you know, to potential customers and trying to gauge, uh, like sometime in twenty-twenty-six, like April and later. So, it, it, that, that's the challenge right now, is where we're at. We just don't know, uh, from a timing standpoint.
Would you not actually have any weddings committed?
I, I have a, I have a couple weddings committed for like, um, uh, let me think about that. April, I think April, April and May, something like that.
Of what year?
Of twenty-twenty-six. Yeah. So, I, I just told them if something happened where we couldn't get the construction done, we would just totally refund their monies. Yeah. They're aware of the situation. Obviously, and I don't have a building, so.
Three hundred total people, total?
Total, yes. On the property total, whether indoors or out.
The, uh, how far are you into developing your, your, uh, workups and setup for your safety system?
Um, that's all completed. Yeah, all completed. I think we're pretty much ninety-five percent, ninety-nine percent there on really everything. I think, once upon, um, you know, approval, if you all recommend, uh, for us to meet next week at the commission, um, I think once, assuming we did get approval then, I think we'd be ready to submit for building plans, probably within the next week or two. So, pretty close.
Uh, I have just two more questions, folks. Uh, who owns Spring Lakes Events LLC?
Uh, same, my wife and I, Deanna.
Okay. And then, uh, under your stormwater management paragraph, you say we'll be addressing future at-time new construction, if applicable. Uh, what's your thoughts on that? Have you had any talk with folks on that?
I, I believe we've already done all the legwork on that to make sure it's all up to speed, all the engineering work. So, I think we're, we're ahead on all the engineering across the board.
You've got plenty of land to work with, so.
Yes, indeed. That's right.
Alright, any other questions, Mr. Brown? Alright, let's hear what the folks have to say. Alright. Anyone here like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward.
Hi, my name is Charles Nation, I live here in Cass County, specifically Raymore. The reason why I'm up here to, in favor of this is because actually I just got married May of last year. And the big problem that me and my wife had was finding an event space that wasn't a barn-looking or something like that, that was more elegant on this side of town for our family and friends. We had a number of friends come in from out of town as well. And we ended up having to put kind of everybody in, in Jackson County as well as move our wedding to Jackson County because we couldn't find anything out this way. The big thing was is, you know, elegant, everything tends to be going towards more barn-style or rustic style. And I feel like that was a fad and then that's what we were looking for was more of that elegant. And the other thing that I would say is we love the outdoor ceremony, but inside reception, I think that's what all couples are really gravitating towards if the weather cooperates. Because you don't wanna be outside all night with bugs and all that stuff. You wanna be inside for, for the reception area. But the ceremony with just the beautiful nature and pictures and scenery, being able to accomplish those photos and things like that. And plus, the, the ceremony is typically anywhere from noon to maybe six o'clock at the latest. So that's really the only times that you're really outside. That's, that was what I wanted to speak on and just, you know, being able to have families that are in the area have a space to go to and use and, and really call home to, to Cass County here.
How'd you hear about this, this, this application?
So oddly enough, I would have never heard about this, other than the fact that Matt actually approached us to design and build this location. And when I saw what his vision was, I was a hundred percent on board of, of getting it through the city and built for him and the Cass County.
Just couldn't delay that wedding till the.
Wife would not let me.
Have you seen a bunch of the parameters and the things he has listed on here?
Yeah.
Okay, so what's your thoughts on a one A M. deadline for a wedding?
That's, I mean, that's.
Is, is that late, too late, too early? What's your thought? You just got married, you're a young guy, what's one A M. do you try?
Most places won't go past one A M.
Pardon me?
Most places won't go past one A M. Most of them have like an eleven, eleven-thirty or one o'clock, just because of liquor licenses and, and things like that. So it's not uncommon at all. And most of the time you're there all day, you're, you're ready to go at eleven or eleven-thirty, yeah.
Yeah, I hear you. Been forty-five years, but I hear you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else who'd like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody like to speak against the application, have concerns or questions? We'll, we'll let this young lady that's yet stood up already, so. Please come, yeah, you're up. Next, next one. She's got two sheets of paper.
Tiny print.
Big print? Large font?
Yep.
Did we get your social security number too?
My name is Brenda Hallberg, B R E N D A, Hallberg, H A L L B E R G. I live at two-one, two-one-one, Southeast Clover Hills Road. I am two-point-two miles, as the crow flies, south of this proposed venue. Or, yeah. So, um, I got on board with this and met the neighbors of this venue when we got involved with the airport situation. And I've grown fond of these people and so, since this isn't going to affect me as much, I'm still helping fight this because it will affect me because these are roads that I travel.
So you think this application is part of the airport, the airport, right?
Do I think it is?
Is that what you're saying?
I, I possibly.
Possibly.
At the, I, I don't have proof. At the last meeting here, when Mr. Wilcox got up and spoke on behalf of Mr. Brown, it made us all a little curious.
All right, I interrupt, keep going.
But we're here to talk about this. All I heard Mr. Brown talk about tonight were weddings, peaceful, elegant, beautiful weddings. On here, on his application, what was not mentioned in detail are charity galas, general gatherings, meetings, classes, festivals, parties, performances, workshops, trade shows, holiday markets, fairs and other similar events. So, what are we to think? So Friday, Saturday, Sunday are gonna be weddings. When are these other events going to happen? During the day on the weekends? Well, that pretty much shoots everyone's weekend around there. Whether it's via traffic, noise, you name it. I did have a script to stick to, but I, I obviously have gone off script already. I have some questions, some of them have been answered already, may have found out these are.
True.
To look at. I do request that all of these be, uh, looked at and discussed amongst yourselves and Mr. Brown, you can have a copy as well. If that's, that's okay. My brief fucking points. I am here to speak out against this event venue. They want to host approximately three hundred people on their website that's a very involved, elaborate website that's already done and they have weddings. I've, I've been doing my homework. They are moving ahead with this business as if it's already been approved. They've adopted a freeway on one-fifty. It's just, it kind of seems a little bit like part before the horse, but I may not be privy to some information that has already taken place. They plan to operate three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, so we have to anticipate that all year long. Like what events are gonna be happening? They will be serving alcohol at every event, it says so in their application. Grave concern, several neighbors who live adjacent to this property, we've all met. We, to try to avoid repeating a lot, we've all taken a different topic. I'm just kicking this off. You have the questions? I, I really do encourage you to perhaps wait on the ruling on this until all of these things are discussed. I don't know if you wanna do that tonight, but we'll see. This particular type of business in a rural neighborhood will add stress on many different levels. It, it already has on a lot of residents. It will diminish the quality of future residential and business development and most likely hurt our property values. Would any of you like to live next door to this? The local businesses that are there now don't bother us, they shut down. This just gets rocking and rolling after six P M. I do, I'm not sure if any member of our group was gonna talk about this arrival chart. I don't think any of us are worried about the arrivals. We're worried about close to three hundred people departing in the dark on a hundred-and-ninety-fifth street, Easton a hundred-and-ninety-fifth street, Holmes and all those other little backroads in case they don't wanna enter out onto Holmes and wait in line. We're worried about hundreds of people drunk, tired, emotional, leaving the venue all at once with headlights, with music in their cars, talking loudly. So this is great, but that's, that's really kind of avoiding the big issue. I think I have said all that I am supposed to say. So I'm going to sit down and let the next person go and that would be.
Before you head out.
Yes.
What are your top two or three topics that you want me to say? She told us this, what are the top two or three?
Oh. You're not gonna make me speak for everybody, 'cause everybody put a lot of work into this, right?
No, okay, what, you verbalize.
Me.
What you have verbalized, what are your top two or three verbalizations that you want the board to come away with?
Oh, noise and traffic. Yeah.
You don't care about arrival and departure?
Well, I mean, I don't live off a hundred-and-ninety-fifth, but I think the real issue is, you know, it's going to be dark, even in the summer, at eleven o'clock, it's gonna be dark. And eleven o'clock is late for music. We, we might not be able to tell what song it is, but we'll be able to hear the beat. If anyone's been to any type of DJ or band situation, yeah, we're gonna hear it. Some neighbors who came tonight who live across from where this will be told me that they, they've lived there for thirty-four years, that they were able to hear music from that judon, judon public house when it used to be a biker bar. They'd have music outside. That place has since reopened. I think it's a little more upscale and mellow.
All right, so your concerns are noise and traffic?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Oh, I did wanna say on one of those, I, I, one of the questions or that I'm offering is I would love to invite all of you to come out to that area to take a look at the roads.
So you're talking about item number twelve?
Yes, thank you, thank you. I'm gonna get better at this, I have a feeling.
Well, you're talking loud enough, so that's the first step.
That's what everyone tells me.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Sir.
Press on, yeah?
Yeah.
What's the application, thirty-one, thirty-four, is it? Thanks for your time, I'm very new at this, I don't know what I'm doing. Please forgive me if I ask stupid questions. Uh, first question, when.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name.
Charles Hayes.
Charles Hayes?
Yes.
Okay, sir, go for it.
I live on a hundred-and-ninety-fifth street, about a half mile from the venue, proposed venue. When you introduced the application number, you said this is old business. I, I'm new at this, I don't understand, please forgive me. It's my understanding that this venue is not yet and may ultimately not be approved. Is that correct?
This is a, this is a Robert's Rule of Order. Old business brought forward from a previous meeting. That means it's an old application because it happened two months ago and we're now re-looking at it.
Okay.
It has nothing to do with the age of the building, the people, anything. I may say stupid things, so bear with me.
You and I may get along just fine. If, if, but from my understanding, this is not approved and may not happen. Is that correct? Okay.
It's still in the hearing process, yes, that's correct.
Then I'm, I'm gonna move forward with that. Speaker earlier said weddings are already scheduled. That seems a little premature to me, but that, that's an opinion. I know very little about this project, most of what I know I learned today, I make crazy notes on my phone. I do know that some of my neighbors are very concerned and opposed to the point of going door-to-door to collect signatures to oppose this. The website is up, taking reservations and advertising prices for both services and alcohol, as if alcohol is an integral part of the business. The website suggests an occupancy of two-hundred-and-eighty-four, and the speaker earlier said three-hundred, but it's very close, and ample onsite parking. That's a lot of potential intoxicated drivers. Even if one percent of that number gets on the road after drinking, that is two drivers at every event that are danger to my children. The entrance to the venue on a hundred-and-ninety-fifth is in close proximity to the intersection, Holmes Road, where cross-traffic travels in excess of fifty miles an hour. The high number of additional drivers that is intersection on event ratings will increase the risk of that intersection, even if one hundred percent of the drivers are alcohol-free. Now that I've learned about the planned exit, I like this even less because upon leaving the venue, the drivers, intoxicated or not, will be closer to my home. I live about half-mile away, that's twenty-six-hundred-and-forty feet. The planned exit is supposed to be, if I understand correctly, one thousand foot nearer to my home. So I'm gonna have as many as three hundred people within sixteen-hundred-and-forty feet of my home and my children. There's a M O dot sign that you mentioned. On Highway one-fifty, and the website is really cool, it's really professionally done. The business seems already to be in operation, making me, and this is why I question things, making me think this is already approved and I, when I came here, I didn't even know if there was any point to opposition.
The application's not been approved, we have not voted on it or anything.
Okay, thank you for that. Other concerns that I didn't even think of myself were brought up by the gentleman earlier, like light and noise, trash, et cetera. I'm a little just curious, how did he get an official M O dot sign on the highway prior to the business being approved? That's just a curiosity.
We'll ask you.
All right, thank you. That's all I have to say, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Hayes.
Oh, you asked my previous speaker, what primary concerns were? My primary.
I gotta write down here this stuff, I, I did write her.
My primary concern is danger to my children.
I did not write that down, thank you. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Vanessa Porimsky. Do you want me to spell that? P O R.
Sorry.
P O R.
Right.
E N B S K I.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All righty, I live at two-zero-zero-zero-seven South Prospect Avenue in Belton, just right around the corner from this project. So I was looking over the application and saw Mr. Brown had requested the standard wedding venue permission. But he has also added the ability to hold festivals, parties, performances and fairs. He wants to have fairs in my neighborhood. He wanted to have car shows at one point, but I don't see that on the recent application. So I just wanna go on the record that I am avidly against this. I will tell you, I was one of the members of the, one of the neighbors that went and met with Mr. Brown. And a, a lot of his information has changed from the time that I had initially met him. At, at one point I.
From one of those meetings you made?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Tell me what's changed since one of your, one of those three meetings?
Uh, well, I, I only was at one meeting.
Yeah.
It was three different groups of neighbors.
You attended one of the three.
I did. The time is all over the place, the open, the, or the closing time, all over the place. Yeah, all over the place. And at one point, obviously, he was gonna have another building and that building was gonna hold six hundred people, but that one kind of went away. At one point I heard, and I don't know because. At one point I heard, and I don't know because there's been a lot of different people talk, uh, I, but I believe he had said at one point he talked about having car shows. But I don't see that on this application, not that that would be any different than having a festival or, or carnival or whatever it is he's planning. Um, anyway, so, um, I've been a resident of Cass County for the past twelve years. Um, I recently retired from Missouri probation and parole.
Did you, did you, uh, when he, he had that list of all the other events?
Yes.
What was the first thing that came to your mind?
I, I, I can't say it here.
The Renaissance Festival came to my mind.
The what?
Renaissance Festival.
Actually, no, a four-twenty festival, that's what comes to my mind.
I see.
I mean, because that's, you know, who knows? Once this is approved, we have absolutely no control over this chaos.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Anyway, sorry. Um, uh, the last, I retired from probation and parole after twenty-three years. The last four years of my career, I was the Cass County DUI court officer with Judge Michael Runley. Um, so I am familiar with DWIs, I'm familiar with Holmes Road, I'm familiar with this county. I've personally dealt with a lot of dangers driving on Holmes Road. A good friend of mine's son's grandparents, the Hennings, I don't know if you're familiar with them, um, um, they were driving on Holmes Road, uh, and they were killed by a drunk driver on Holmes Road. And my hus- my son and I saw that. Uh, they were residents of Block Lloyd. My son and I saw a motorcycle driver, motorcycle rider that had been ripped in half, uh, and I've been run off the road personally by a man that was having a seizure. So, and if you go up and down Holmes Road, there are tons of alcohol, beer, all kinds of trash. That, so there's people already driving radically now and already drinking. The accident's almost daily. It's truly one of the most dangerous stretches of roads in Cass County, and I too wanted to get something from Missouri Highway Patrol, but their list is long. Uh, the roads are narrow with no shoulders, guests are leaving at night, uh, and they're not familiar with the area. They're turning onto Holmes Road or crossing one hundred and ninety-ninth. Uh, roads are narrow with no shoulders, they're dangerous enough at daylight, let alone after night with too much to drink. Uh, people, people spend all the time pass, and they pass when they shouldn't. Um, like I said, we see beer bottles and, uh, bo- of alcohol in the ditches. Um, and it's really unfortunate that Mr. Brown adopted one fifty highway and not Holmes Road, because Holmes Road is the one that's covered in alcohol litter. Um, there's, so there's drunk people on these roads already. Uh, these party guests are not familiar with the area and it makes them more dangerous for them and for us being the innocent bystanders. Um, and, you know, hopefully we're just not at the wrong place at the wrong time. Uh, and at one hundred and ninety-fifth at Holmes, we too have a cross there. Uh, I'm aware of two vehicle-related deaths at the intersection of one hundred and ninety-fifth at Holmes. Uh, another person's car went over the edge and into railroad track. Uh, Peggy Bruce is gonna get up here and speak shortly. Uh, she was rear-ended with her car flipped into the ditch by someone who came over the rise in the road and did slow down while she was waiting her turn. Uh, that's not even counting the deaths that result, uh, the, the accidents that result, results in deaths. So my question is, is Ca- is Cass County gonna be able to send traffic cops out when these kind of venue events are released out into the community? Um, and to be clear, once he's granted permission for this venue, the neighbors, all of us here, we're not gonna have any recourse. Uh, Mr. Br- if Mr. Brown follows the rules, great, if he doesn't follow the rules, uh, but he, uh, we're, we're not gonna know how many people are on his property. It's a hundred and thirty acres. So I've lived in the country most of my life, uh, when you live in the country, five to ten mile radius are considered your neighbors. Uh, Mr. Brown has no intention of living on the property. At this time, I don't believe he plans on being a lot of these events he has scheduled. I believe he's going to be hiring a property or event coordinator along with a bartender. I'm not even sure how this works, if this is a bar, I, I don't know. Our law enforcement has already stretched thin enough, and Mr. Brown has requested permission for events three hundred and sixty-five years, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, with as many events as possible. This is a business he is not, that he has moved here from Arizona to build. He does not live in this community, he's only, this is just a business. This is a recipe for disaster. I can't imagine how the property manager and event coordinator is gonna be held responsible for the alcohol consumption of, uh, three hundred people in an event space. So my question to you is, well, who's gonna be held accountable? Mr. Brown's LLC, Cass County, I, I, who, I, who's, who's responsible for this? Uh, as far as, um, will he be under the same...
How much more do you have?
Not much.
Okay, go for it.
Okay, uh, he, will he have the same legal obligations as a bar, uh, and since he will have his own bartender staff, uh, and then how do festivals work, so? Anyway, that's pretty much all I have.
I appreciate you coming forward and sharing that with us.
I appreciate you listening to us.
Okay, uh, some of you were here the last time we met with respect to this application, and I, I forgot to say something at the beginning that I said at the last one. If I hear a topic more than three times, I'm gonna shut you off. I've heard traffic three times, I'm done with it. I've heard noise, I've heard alcoholism, I've heard all, I, I've heard enough, I know, we know. Dream up a different topic. Anybody else wanna come up?
I do.
Please come up, ma'am.
I'm Peggy Bruce, the one that went in the ditch in my car.
What's the number, three one?
Three four.
Three one three.
Three down, three four.
Okay, um, I am here to talk about noise, but I wanna add a couple of handouts because Matt Brown is a very likable guy, and I have enjoyed meeting him, but I feel like what he is telling us is not what's in the application. So this is also, this is as much about what's in the application versus what he says to us in the venue as anything else. So, uh, concern about what is the application and why is the application not up to date? Number two is talking about a high-end luxury wedding venue and people, um, staying in Belton. I love Belton, I've lived out here since nineteen eighty-eight, and I think the world of Belton. But at the same time, Belton does not have Johnson County amenities. Uh, Belton does not have the type of services and suppliers or facilities that these wedding attendees are going to want to, um, stay at. So I don't think there's much benefit to the, the community of Belton. Now, what I wanna show you in these pictures, these come from the application, and that's my point, is that the application looks one way and what he's saying is another thing. So, you know, we're all neighbors out here in the country, we moved out to the country for the peace and quiet. But they wanna move in, bringing a commercial business to rural agricultural neighborhood. And you've heard about, yes, the wear and tear on the rundown roads already, and we all know Mount Pleasant Township doesn't have any money to fix them. We've heard about drunk drivers. We've heard about the increased traffic and the danger to the cyclists who use our roads, to those of us who are walking along the roads. Um, but the biggest issue is noise, and that's what I wanna point out here in, in this handout. So page one, um, Mr. Brown talked about, you know, the wedding venues and the west side of the building having an outdoor space. He talks about receptions being inside, but this outdoor space is big, it has a bar out there, and it has ceiling-mounted heaters. So obviously, it's gonna be used for something. So to me, that means outdoor events with music and talking and loudspeakers. Also look on this page at all little red arrows down both sides of the building. Those are double doors that can all be opened, thrown open to allow the fresh air in on an afternoon or an evening, late at night, allowing the sound of the music to escape. So indoor reception, but open doors and windows means sound coming our way. Page two, this is a visual of the property included in the application. Mr. Brown has talked about planting a row of evergreens up along one hundred and ninety-fifth Street, okay, as a way of mitigating some of the sound. Studies show, though, that is woefully inadequate, will not be effective at all, because the studies show you need to plant a barrier of at least twenty-five to thirty feet thick to have any impact on sound. And that barrier needs to be planted within fifty feet of the source of the sound. So this row of trees out here that's a football field away from the event venue is gonna have no impact. Multiplying that is, some of these trees to the west of the driveway are located across from empty cropland. That's a waste of money, that doesn't do anybody any good. The trees need to be planted close to the building and to keep sound from going to the northeast and the direction to the east. Mr. Brown says there's a lot of trees on the property already. I can stand on my property at my horse barn with a clear view to the event space. There is no tree, there are no bushes, there's nothing between me and him, and I'm about maybe fifteen hundred feet away when I do that. So we all know sound travels in the country. Page three, we've talked about the parking lot, and this is a great example, when you ask Vanessa what has changed, um, Mr. Brown has more than one study he's gonna use, um, ambient lighting, low to the ground, et cetera. Mr. Brown has said there's bedrooms, um, in the plan for people to spend the night, but they're not gonna allow that anymore. The application and the plans in front of all of us have streetlights on parking islands, streetlights on parking islands, as in the parking lot. So that to me says, besides the sound destroying our peace and quiet, we're gonna have basically a Walmart parking lot clocked in the middle of a pasture in the country with high streetlights, um, lighting it. That ruins the beautiful night sky. What's the point of living out here if we can't enjoy our surroundings? Alright? So inconsistencies with what he says, and, and I was one of the people at the meeting in November, and that's your fourth page, that's the handout that he gave us on November, I went to the meeting on November twentieth. And the red arrow there is again, uh, about noise, 'cause that's really what I wanted to highlight. He talks about wedding receptions, um, taking place inside. I've talked about how sound can escape, and, you know, wedding receptions outside because they planned the space for it. He's talked about how their music should be less disruptive to us than the trains that pass by on the track. Big difference. A train is passing by for a minute or so, even if it blows its whistle, that's background white noise. That's very different than listening to loud music, loud speakers until eleven o'clock at night or ten o'clock outside, every weekend during good weather. And even bad weather, if they've got the outside heaters on that patio, not the same at all. So feeling that, noise pollution is a really big issue. We've done a lot of research into the statutes, rules, and regulations. Uh, we hadn't found any noise, um, regulations for Mount Pleasant Township or Cass County, maybe because they haven't been needed until now. But that might be something we need to introduce, is noise restrictions for this area, regardless of whether this goes forward or not. The state of Missouri has regulations regarding noise, the Federal Clean Air Act, the Noise Control Act, noise pollution regulations as sta- as established by the Missouri Department of Natural Resources. These laws intend to regulate and manage noise pollution in order to protect the public health and safety and preserve the area. Missouri has implemented policies, noise control ordinances, zoning laws, land use planning, building codes. There is so much documentation that says there should be regulations in place to regulate this business, this commercial business out in agricultural, um, rural America. And we know that there are ordinances for bars and restaurants, and those typically run from ten PM to seven AM. And we know that Missouri law holds property owners responsible for keeping up with the laws and upholding them. There is a concept called maintaining quiet enjoyment. Property owners are responsible for ensuring that activities on their property do not create excessive noise that disrupts the peace and quiet of the surrounding community. This will, this will disrupt significantly, not only noise but also light. We also understand that Missouri residents have a right to request a noise impact study for proposed developments, to understand the potential impact on their quality of life, property values, and overall well-being. Apparently, local planning and zoning boards have knowledge about the process to undertake those studies. And tonight, on behalf of me and my neighbors, I would like to request a, a noise impact study for this development. And I would appreciate after the meeting that we connect on what are the next steps to, to start that process.
Okay.
Alright. In summary, you've heard me say lots of, of reasons to understand that noise is going to impact the neighborhood. You've seen it in the application from Mr. Brown himself. You've also heard me talk about the litany, the array of Missouri state, federal, and county noise, um, ordinances, laws, regulations. I think those should be fully applied in this case. I think this is a, a great example of bringing the existing noise pollution regulations to bear. And so I am asking tonight that you not approve the application for spring week wedding venue. I appreciate your time, I appreciate you letting me talk about the topic, and your service to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Did I take it right?
Yeah.
This is the last thing that I would ever want to do.
What's the first thing?
Oh, I'm sorry. The first thing is...
Your name?
My name is Pam Ray.
Pam Ray?
Yes, I live about a mile and a half from the proposed venue space. I would not be standing here unless I was passionate and believed that my neighborhood is my neighborhood. And I'm gonna try to read this, um, "We are curious, all of us here, all of us neighbors, our community. We are curious, why does someone purchase a rural property and then pursue rezoning the property to install a venue, a wedding venue, an event space? Is it for the community's benefit? No, it is not. It is a very selfish reason. It is for their own benefit. It is not, it is to make money by rezoning the rural property. Our rural community looks out for each other, not our own self-interest. We are a long, enduring community out here. We are curious why rezoning this property for an event venue is even being considered. We residents that have lived here, whether a short time or a long time, bought a rural property for a specific reason. We bought it because it is rural. We live here because it is rural. We live here because it is in the country. It is undeveloped land, it is farmland, it is wildlife habitat. We residents chose our, our peaceful and quiet surroundings, surroundings free of development and commercial interest. We are curious why one developer deserves to disrupt and dis- and destroy our rural community and our lo- lovely peaceful home. Yes, it is our home. It is not the developer's home. Many of us have enjoyed our rural home for over thirty years, and I've just heard closer to forty or more. We urge you to respect and listen to those of us who live, whose lives are deeply invested in the peaceful country area that we live in. Again, it is our home. What if you're, what if you were facing assault on your home, your lifestyle, and your peace? What would you want the ones representing you to do? Please consider your fellow Cass County citizens and friends and residents. Do not rezon the property because one entity has asked you to do so for their own self-interest. We are all curious, why would you even consider rezoning our rural co- community that all of us call our home? Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Miss Ma'am?
Um, I will be fast because I do...
Pull that microphone potion, do you, down?
I need a step stool.
You don't have to talk fast, just talk steady.
I get very nervous.
Who are you?
Janet Stone, I live at five six oh six, East two hundred and Second Street. Um, I'm about... Um, I'm about maybe just over two miles from this center, but these are my neighbors. We're a community. We are the Cass County community. We vote for the commissioners. They are supposed to look out for our interests, not someone that lives in Johnson County that moved here just to put a business. We are the ones, I have been a resident in my house since nineteen ninety-one, and I've been a resident of Cass County since nineteen eighty-eight. I may still have my New Jersey accent, but I am a Cass Countyan. Um, that's important to us. I mean, you're supposed to look out for us. We're the ones that vote for these commissioners. And I'd like to know, are you supposed to have a permit to put in a septic system? How did he already put it in if none of this has even been approved yet? And I know you don't want us to talk about the dri- driving, there's one thing I do wanna bring up, not everyone goes to homes. I live right on White Highway. Dead Man's Curbs. No streetlights, it's dark, and you know how White Highway gets real curvy, someone heading in that direction. So, I mean, there's a whole nother direction that's, you know, for that. Um, our public services are stretched thin, the fire department, the police, the sheriff's department. Yes, he would ultimately be liable in lawsuits, but so would Cass County. And do you wanna take on that possible liability by approving something knowing the potential dangers? Thank you.
Thank you, Janet Stone. Alright, next. How many more after your name?
My name, Diana Swafford.
How many more after Ms. Swafford?
We're all gonna go by the lines.
Yeah, you think?
No.
You think you are? Three more. Alright, let's keep it under five minutes. Been here long enough, we're there for things. Steve, Ms. Swafford?
Good evening, and I thank you for your time. A lot of these people stole my thunder, so this will probably be under five minutes. As the planning board considers Matt Brown's special use permit, we are asking this request to be considered with respect to the county zoning reg- county zoning regulations. And I would just like to bring to your attention some of the important considerations from the regulations. Originally, we were told by Matt Brown that this would be a wedding event venue that would be held mainly on weekends with a rare event during the weekday. I believe Peggy Bruce has already given you the sample, but I've highlighted a few of the things that he has told us.
I need one.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. But, I looked at his website and took a screenshot of it, and I see seventeen different types of events that he is offering to be held at this site. And they are now taking reservations for this beginning in the spring of twenty twenty-six before his permit has even been issued. So, here's the screenshot of the rest. It's taken on February twenty-third of this summer. Soon we'll have our property record as well. Thank you. So, the scope of this, this event has changed when we met with him in November of twenty twenty-four, that was three months ago, from mainly weddings on the weekends to now parties three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And according to the standards in the regulation, the burden of persuasion lies with the landowner who is asking for his special use permit. And in consideration of this, evidence has to be clearly presented to indicate that the proposed special use does the following. If it's not materially detrimental to the public health, safety, convenience and welfare, or results in material damage or prejudice to other property in the vicinity, the proposed use is to be compatible with and preserves the character and integrity of the surrounding area, which includes any improvements he might make now or in the future, should this approved, should this special permit be approved. I propose this is really not in the interest of the surrounding area, of the people who live nearby, the county, or anyone else. And that is certainly not in keeping with the surrounding character and integrity of the area that we currently have. I believe that this will be detrimental to the public health, safety and convenience of, and the welfare of the neighborhood due to the reasons that the people have already mentioned, noise, traffic and visual nuisances from the events that will be held at this site. Please keep in mind, he is attempting to put a commercial space into the middle of a residential neighborhood where we live. Other things that it's not supposed to do is generate pedestrian and vehicular traffic which will be hazardous to the existing and anticipated traffic in the area. And as people have already said, this will dump traffic on Route D and Hundred Ninety Fifth Street by cars as well as delivery vehicles because this is an open vendor space, meaning they can choose whoever they want. So, you will be getting traffic from Johnson County and the Casey Metro area in the form of delivery trucks and delivery vehicles. It is also supposed to contribute to and promote the community welfare at the specific location. And the size and aesthetic character of any construction for the proposed use should be in relationship to similar aspects of the surrounding area. It should be proportional and appropriate for the area. Can Matt Brown explain to you, the planning board, how this venue will promote community welfare and how the construction will be proportional and similar to the aesthetics of the surrounding area, which is a residential neighborhood? The last thing is, it should not cause substantial injury to the value of neighboring property. But I propose to you that having an event venue operating three hundred and sixty-five days a year, holding parties, won't damage the property values for those who live nearby and diminish them. Because who's gonna wanna buy a property in an area where there is constant traffic from these events that will be generated on a daily basis? We do not want this in your neighborhood, in our neighborhood, any more than you would want it in your neighborhood as well. It's the county board of zoning and as well as you, because you are decision makers as well, to kick this to the board of the zoning. Um, it should not have an adverse effect on the public health, safety and welfare. And when the, when considering this, um, it should be based on reason and not, as from the Cass County Missouri building codes, "As distinguished from a variation sought for the purposes of convenience, profit or capricious intent of the landowner or the user." Clearly, the purpose of the event space is for Matt Brown to make a profit from the property. But it's also incumbent on the landowner to prove that this venue is in the best interest of the neighborhood, the community and the county. Two things. Please consider this as you think about whether or not to approve this event venue. From the Missouri Cass County building codes, the difference will not create a detriment to or change in the character of the neighboring land uses or set a precedent that may cause a detriment to other areas in the county. And I ask you this to think about. Will the approval of this event venue open the floodgates to more unplanned development in the area? And is this in the best interest of the neighborhood where it be planted, the surrounding area and the county? Or will this benefit one person, Matt Brown? Thank you for your time.
Alright, next.
Hi, my name is, uh, Keith Prop. Um, I live at eighteen oh two East Hundred Ninety-Fifth Street, which is, which is category two, the property that we're discussing tonight. I had a lot of things I wanted to discuss, but to save time, I'm just gonna reduce it to three, if that's okay. The first one I wanted to discuss is, Mr. Brown has talked about helping neighbors and local businesses. When we had our discussion with him, private meetings that he talked about with you guys, um, I challenged him by asking him a simple question. I said, um, "Could the local neighbors hold an event at the venue like end of the year celebration?" And his response was, "Oh, I will allow local clubs and, um, others like nonprofit groups to use the facility." That was not my question. My question was, "What about the neighbors?" So, my assumption is, and I can only assume that the answer is no, so how is that helping the neighbors in any way? Second, uh, concern I have is firearm use at the facility. Since we live basically directly across the street, there have been several times when we've heard gunshots coming from the facility. And this isn't just someone sighting in a gun, this is someone who shoots around ten rounds, pauses, shoots another ten rounds, pauses and shoots another ten rounds, and it goes on for thirty minutes to an hour. And my question is, who is using the firearms on this facility and what are they shooting? As far as I know, there's not a shooting range on the facility or on the premises, so I have no idea what's going on. And is he gonna allow shooting at the facility or during events? I don't know that. It doesn't really state that in the, um, application. My other concern that I have is more dealing with safety. And in this concern, um, I don't know if you know it or not, but the facility sits about one thousand nine hundred and fifty feet from the end of the airhead airpark runway, number thirty-three. If you look at the FAA regulations, uh, fourteen CR ninety-one dot one one nine, it states that an airplane must maintain a minimum safe distance to persons and property on the surface of a thousand feet over congested areas. Congested areas be stuff like, uh, the city of Belton. It also states that the airplane must maintain a minimum safe distance to persons and property on the surface of five hundred feet over non-congested areas. Mount Pleasant Township falls into that non-congested area. However, the minimum safe distances do not apply during takeoff and landings. And this is where my concern lies. If you look at the proposed runway and assume that the airplane when it takes off from that runway, maintains the heading of three three zero, which is the runway that they would be on, runway thirty-three, the plane would pass by the building that we're talking about at only two hundred and fifty feet east of the building. Now, that's a concern, but a bigger concern is how high up off the ground is the airplane as it passes the building? And that can be calculated if you know some information about the distance and the angle of takeoff. So, if you assume my arm here, my finger is the end of the runway, my elbow is the, uh, building that we're talking about, that's one thousand nine hundred and fifty feet. A single engine plane usually takes off between an angle of eight or twelve degrees. Um, if you use trigonometry to come up with the answer of what the height would be from my right finger to my elbow, which would be the height above the ground, at a takeoff angle of eight degrees, it'd only be two hundred and seventy-four feet above the ground. At a twelve degree angle, it'd be four hundred and fourteen feet above the ground. That's extremely close to the building. And, um, I think it would be a problem. If you change your assumptions, which is what Mr. Wilcox, who is part of the airpark, has talked about, you would take off not at the end of the runway, but somewhere further down the runway. So, if we assume it's a thousand feet down the runway, this distance now becomes twenty-nine thou- or twenty-nine hundred and fifty feet. And you do the same calculation. At an eight degree takeoff, the plane would be four hundred and fourteen feet above the ground. And a twelve percent, or twelve degree takeoff, the plane would be six hundred and twenty-seven feet above the ground. Again, extremely close to the building as it flies by. Now, Mr. Wilcox has said that the proposed flight plan would be, as soon as the plane leaves the runway, it would immediately take a turn to the left.
Okay, that hasn't been heard yet. The application hasn't been heard yet, so we can't consider that at this time, because that's not in place.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, the, the issues are, the planes are flying too close to this building. So, if you have an issue with safety-
That hasn't been approved yet, so therefore that's not an issue at this time, if it will even be approved.
Okay. Okay. Then, um, I guess I have no other comments.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Alright, this is the last one. I hope it's good. Alright, keep it under five minutes, would you, sir? I'm serious, let's get this thing going. I'll try to keep it brief. Take five minutes, just to write my address.
Thirty-one, thirty-four.
Thirty-one, thirty-four. Alright. I know you all heard a lot, I'll keep it brief. What's your name? My name is Peter Hallberg. I live at two one two one one Southeast Cloverhills Road. So, I do appreciate your continued focus and attention here. When I get what I want, I will do what I want. That's essentially the proposal that's before you right now. He says he's gonna care about the community, the noise, the traffic, the drinking and all that other sort of stuff. But his actions, and that we should trust him, that he's gonna be a good neighbor. But his actions that you've heard demonstrate to us that we can't trust him in that regard. We need proper guardrails in place, or we're gonna have all those events he's avoiding talking about that had been brought up to you, so I won't raise them again here. I would also, though, like to point out, there's a risk of smaller groups coming into this facility under the guise of a hook club or a pilots meeting, basically just to drink. That would make this a bar, not an event space. The only hope that we have to prevent these disruptions to our quality of life is right here with you, with this board. I'm gonna switch gears real quick and give you a little bit of background on me. I spent over twenty-five years conducting economic reviews and creating investment pros- proposals for a global company. And when I look at this proposal through that lens, it makes no sense to the county. Other than taxes of what, five hundred, thousand dollars a month, there's no benefit to be had. He talks about, uh, restaurants, hotels, caterers, floors, photographers, there's none within twenty to thirty minutes of the venue. None. Most of those services are gonna go to the areas he's marketing at. Jackson County and Johnson County, Kansas, where he lives. So, when you look at the benefit, financial benefit versus the liability, it's not worth it. You've heard the evidence, you've heard the concerns, it's obvious this proposal is contrary to the master plan. It's detrimental to the public interest, it's dangerous to the environment and public safety, and yields unacceptable revenue relative to the risk. The applicant will be given an opportunity to come up here and respond. And you'll hear probably more vague statements, maybe some confusing statements, empty promises. He may even complain that we're trying to restrict his ability to pursue his business. But here's the thing. My rights end the moment they interfere with your rights, and your rights end the moment they interfere with mine. His right to pursue his business does not supersede our rights to enjoy our property safely and without disturbances. Every issue we brought to your attention is a threat to those rights. So, when he gets up here to speak, regardless of his words, know that what he's really telling you, "When I get what I want, I'll do what I want." Listen to the citizens of Cass County and deny this application. Are there any questions from the board? Thank you, sir. Alright, sir. How, how are you this evening?
Welcome, getting tired.
Yeah, welcome to Laker Bay. Alright, good evening.
Good evening. Name's Faith Swafford, and I live right northeast of, uh, this proposed project. And, uh, Mr. Brown, you sure talk fast, can't you? Seems like you may. Anyway, I- I'd like to, uh, give this a little preamble before I give you my opposition to his project. But my, uh, I moved into Cass County about thirty-five years ago. At that time, it was what I considered a country county. I mind my business, you mind yours. We're going our separate ways. Not anymore. Cass County's an urban county. And it's just like Jopson County, Kansas, Windock County, Platte, Clay, Eastern Jasper. There's only one difference. We're not getting the developments that we need. And, uh, I think I do not know the answer to that. But I do know part of it. There's a specialist called, uh, Licensed and Certified Urban Planning and Development Specialist. Cass County don't have one. And that's, they should be getting one post hoc now then. Uh, that's about it. I'm not gonna repeat all the things that's been, uh, said about opposition. But I will make two predictions. One prediction is that any money that Mr. Brown makes will go to Jopson County, Kansas. Cass County won't see a penny of it. Another prediction is sometime in the future, that's gonna become such a public nuisance and liability to the county that they're gonna try to revoke this special use laws. When they do, be prepared to pay a lot of money. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, that, uh, ends the, uh, section. Now, Mr. Brown, please come forward and address the topics of conversation.
Okay. Uh, so first, uh, regarding noise, I was just taking notes, so I might be, uh, might not have all the topics quite together. But, um, so as I spoke in my introduction, that we will be doing noise cancelling within, within the building. Um, and someone mentioned that it might be related to Arrowhead Airport. I mean, we're definitely not. I just barely met the gentleman, uh, when he came to the meeting. Uh, let's see here. A lot of folks brought up some of the other similar events. As, you know, as I mentioned, we're gonna be focusing on the wedding event venue. Uh, but, um, so we can have some of the business flexibility. You know, I mentioned that we may potentially do any of those other types of events, but reality is, if we have a wedding, you know, on the weekend, uh, that we're not gonna be able to, to really have any other kind of event that takes over that, that weekend. I mean, that, that's the reality of it. Our marketing is just strictly focused on, on weddings. Uh, but, uh, we may have birthday parties or other things like we listed on, on the website. But that just gives us some, uh, some flexibility from a business standpoint. Um, traffic was mentioned regarding departures, and, uh, they really do also take place over time as well. It's not as though once everything ends, everybody leaves at the same time. You have a number of folks that leave, uh, right after the ceremony that don't stay for the reception. And then people just slowly filter out during the reception. Usually the younger folks are the ones that stay a little bit, a little bit later. Uh, let's see here. Uh, so one, uh, general topic was talking about the, uh, the drinking. Uh, as I mentioned, you know, we, we will abide within the law and, you know, anybody driving with DUI, that's already against the law. And we will not allow anybody to, to get drunk. So we'll, uh, you know, follow any of the rules and regulations that there are out there, just like any of the, uh, uh, any of the, the bars or venues that are within the, that are within the county already. A question was brought up about the sign, the, the MoDOT sign. How did we, how did we get it? It's just a sponsor of highway, uh, for trash cleanup. So I was able to simply file an application with them, uh, submit the, the sign design, and we just pay a monthly fee for that, uh, company that MoDOT works with to do the trash pickup, uh, along the Highway one fifty. Um, some of the time changes, we adjusted based on, on feedback from the previous meetings and looking to accommodate and work with the community and with the, with the county. Um, I am invested in the community. I've got a big investment in the, the property, the home, the new construction. And I, I go to church right over here at, uh, uh, goodness gracious, I've written the, written the name of our own church, but, um, Hope Church. So I'm invested in the community. I, I do live in Leewood, but I invested big time in the community, for sure. Let's see here. I think we will have, uh, a big positive impact economically to the area. Uh, you know, I, I, I won't list those again. I listed those in my opening, opening statement. Uh, the outdoor patio area is just meant to be for a room flip. Uh, so in, in the wedding industry, uh, if the ceremony is held inside, the, the ceremony or the, the large ballroom space, after the ceremony, the folks just go out to the, to that patio, which we do want to heat, uh, so if there's any climate weather. But that's just strictly for like a holding place while we bring out tables for the reception to be, to be set up. So that's, uh, that's its primary function. Um, we do plan to plant more, more trees close to the building, again, helping with the noise mitigation. And we aren't doing the large streetlights. We're doing the small ballroom lights. Uh, let's see here. Uh, again, to noise, uh, all the other previously approved venues seem to be able to coexist with, uh, residences. And I guess I kinda reiterate again, we're, we're quite a long distance from, uh, all the residences in the area. Um, and as a business, we do need to make money so we can hire people, promote economic development in the, in the county. That's just, we have to make money. And, but we'll be putting it back into, into the business. It's just the nature of, of, of running the business. Uh, the septic is not installed yet. It's just designed. Uh, we certainly won't have events three hundred and sixty-five days a year, like I mentioned earlier, which is mostly gonna be Saturdays, uh, potentially, um, Fridays and Saturdays as well. There's definitely the possibility of weekday, but highly unlikely. People just generally don't get married during the week. Uh, I don't know the name of the, of the venue that's in, uh, Lee Summit, but, um, it's got housing developed nearby. And actually, the, the, it, it does drive and it actually helps. The, uh, property values go up. And so, uh, that, that, that just generally happens. Uh, let's see here. Uh, neighbors can rent the space, you know, just like anywhere, anyone else. We're totally fine with that. Uh, I think that's all, that's the end of my notes.
How can you get a MoDOT sign?
Of the MoDOT sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I had seen one. Another company had sponsored one. And so I looked on the, uh, the website for the company that MoDOT works with. And they just basically fill out the application. They submit it to MoDOT for approval. And they gave us, uh, gave us the sign. And then, uh, uh, they do, uh, I think they do, I can't remember if it's every two weeks or every month, they do trash pickup on that section. So it's sponsoring the company to do trash pickup on behalf of MoDOT.
Okay, check in Mr. Hayes.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. All right. Any questions? Do you have some questions?
I do. I do.
Go for it.
They mentioned that they changed their hours of operation, which they say primarily their hours will be there. But they still have the option of being able to operate until one AM seven days a week. I think that is a major concern for the neighbors and anyone in that area. So it, it says Monday through Thursday, seven AM to six PM. Friday through Sunday, seven AM to one AM, followed by there's possibility of events being hosted during weekday operations in which we would offer later hours of operation until one AM, like the weekend. So therefore their operation hours within the SUP are listed as seven AM to one AM. Because ultimately, that's how-
For all seven days.
For all seven days. And they are saying primarily weddings, but it is open to these other options. They would still be limited to the three hundred max period.
See how people are concerned about that?
I, I do. And, um, what we-
The problem with this is, there's three things on here that have, for you, wide open parameters. And it's bo- it's bothersome to the local citizenry.
Sure.
The hours is one of them. Keep jumping around, as you know. You try to have, you try to help, and then it gets back. So what are you gonna change it to this time? Roof and all?
Uh, I mean, I'm-
The same?
I mean, I, I'd be happy to, if we could move it down to, um, to midnight. That, I think that'd be fine, because then what I could, it took up-
Still seven days a week, though?
Well, I, so I think the, the, the challenge being that, um, like if, if I tell them that we're gonna have them end festivities before, like before eleven, and you just give them like an hour just to get all their decorations out?
On a Tuesday night, or a Wednesday night.
I mean, it's possible if they do, if they do a wedding on a, a weekday.
That's what I wanted clarified.
People get up in the mornings, you know, if you have something on the lane, but-
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like he wants to change it.
End, not when you leave after clean up.
Oh, when the thing ends?
You see what I'm saying?
Okay, yeah. Well, and we do plan on ending at eleven. I mean, that, that's, that's the-
Okay, let's, let's put it this way. If you were a neighbor and you lived right next door, and you had something that ended at eleven o'clock on a Monday night, on a Tuesday night, and you gotta get up at five o'clock the next morning to go to work, the owner of that operation doesn't live there, so they're not impacted by it. That's where the neighbors are coming in concern, where they don't feel like they're being heard.
I see, yeah.
So if there were any changes you would wanna make before the board makes their decision, now would be the time. If there's not, then that's fine, and you're more than welcome to state that, and they can move forward with tonight's meeting.
Okay, I gotcha. So, so if I'm hearing you correctly, maybe some flexibility to say, um, like if we ended at ten PM on a, on a weeknight? I mean, that, that may be-
Monday through Thursday?
Monday through Thursday.
Is that all right?
This is entirely up to you. I'm, I'm just going based on what-
You're doing it out there. What are your thoughts?
Well, what the residents are stating. But if he doesn't wanna change it, or whichever-
Nothing from the crowd, John.
Then, if there was changes made tonight, depending on what the vote was, that would still go to the commission next week. They would have their chance to speak again next week at that meeting.
Please, please move it down out there.
It's scheduled for next Wednesday. Right? Is that what we got it heard?
It's in the paper.
You want me to suspend the meeting for five minutes and we can go outside and finish up your conversations with whomever you're talking to, whether yourself? I can hear you, Miss Stone. All right. All right. All right. So what do you guys say?
It's entirely up to him. And you guys?
You guys want ten?
My question's eighteen.
Yeah. Is that good?
It's better than one block.
Huh?
About better than one block.
Yeah. So would you agree to ten o'clock?
Yeah, I, that, that seems reasonable to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I, like, again, I don't think we're gonna have hardly any events. Those are, that's totally fine. I can make that a stretch.
And you want to keep it full as much as possible. That's the whole secret. And I know most of them, the minutes don't have alcohol, um, but covered.
That's what they had proposed, yes.
You good with that?
That's my bad time.
Go for it. Now, the thing that's really open-ended is, I don't, I don't understand. Like, I do understand as a businessman and capitalist that you, you want the ability to have a bill. So you have this line item, two lines, approximately, of the various things you wanna do. And folks have these visions that, that are counter to yours apparently. You know what I'm saying? And I, I don't know how to get around that, Mr. Brown. Because you, you, you want the opportunity to drive revenue, top line revenues, and you can ma- make this thing work. And we're worried about weird shit happening out there. Pardon my French. So, anyway. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Brown? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, Valerie, anything else you wanna say?
No, sir.
No, you don't? Okay. You guys have any questions of anybody? All right, Chair, we accept the motion at this time.
I'm in commission to deny application thirty-one, thirty-four as submitted, and the planning board report will state such respectfully.
With the, uh, change to-
The change is not.
With the change, okay. So Lynn has made the recommendation that we deny the approval of application thirty-one, thirty-four as submitted with the changes. Is there a second?
Second.
Bobby with the second. All right, Mike, what's your vote?
Yeah, there's a lot of them.
All right, what's?
I just made the-
All in eight, all in favor?
Yes.
To deny.
To deny.
To deny.
To deny.
Yeah, all right. Four to deny, none to not deny, no extension to. Mr. Brown, we, we've made the recommendation to deny your application. However, it will come to the, uh, Commissioners on March fifth at noon, so you wanna be there to represent yourself. Third floor. Okay, thank you.
We still have another application to be heard. Yeah. And as far as the noise ordinance or anything like that, you would probably, your best bet would be to address the commission, because they're the ones that start the ordinance changes.
We have one more piece of business. If you wanna skip around and listen to, uh, regulations for data centers. You don't wanna give them? Yep. Take care.
Is there another sign out there? On Holmes Road, or?
On one fifty.
One fifty's out of the county. It, well, it's not our regulations.
Okay, uh, application three, one, two, nine. Cass County amendments, new regulations concerning data consent or regulations. Valerie?
Uh, you have the January revision based on the last few many meetings that we had, um, that some of the public spoke. They're also here again tonight, um, probably willing to speak. We, I went over those changes as well with, uh, our county council. Some of the main things was, uh, sound setbacks from the subject property line, not just other structures. Uh, supplemental substations, which means a substation is only to service that property for whatever equipment is located on that property. Um, sound buffers for equipment was also addressed through this, this revision. Um, as far as max, maximum amount of coverage on the lot, we had covered that before. Uh, minimum maximum amount of acreage that could be used was covered before. Um- Uh, minimum maximum amount of acreage that could be used was covered before, um, the sound despoles, um, buffering, screening, landscaping, fencing, we went over that. Uh, did a little more detail on that. The height, overall height of data center, potential, um, as far as utilities existing and can provide their current level of service now to the existing customers, that it won't be impacted by a potential data center. Uh, sound on generators, battery storages. There was a, a lot of minor modifications over the last few meetings. Um, I hope we have met, um, the best intent for Cass County overall for any potential developers as well as existing landowners or future landowners.
I got two questions. One, what's, what was the biggest thing council was, uh, visiting about? What was their hot button?
The setback chart.
Setbacks?
Mm-hmm.
That is?
That was one of the main things. And then, uh, we had open discussion on subsis- substations to service a data center. Um, the way our, is there any orders written now as a substation would in and of its own require its own special use permit and own zoning action? But we, um, we heard the people that spoke and we put that as part of this action. So if someone was to come and apply, it would be one action to include that as well, so they wouldn't, a potential developer wouldn't have to go through a separate action for a substation, provided it's only servicing this site. It, it cannot provide service for off-site structures.
Okay. Uh, second question. Five folks here, uh, uh, confused. We've had some really tremendous, uh, response, education involved from them. Would anybody like to say anything about what we currently have? And it's gonna go to the vote.
You can come up. Yeah, you can come up, sign in, speak.
Come up. Come on up.
Yeah, let's come on up.
If you don't want a huge tutorial, please. If I like your, you all have to sit. We'll take that. I appreciate it.
Uh, why she signing in? Also, the commission did extend their moratorium another ninety days to May? I, I believe it's-
It was supposed to end in February, so-
I think, uh, I think it was to May.
I wanna, uh, Kathy Lincoln, twenty thousand South Grand Drive in Belton. Thank you all for all of your hard work, for listening to us, for adopting best practices across the country. I think you've done a phenomenal job. Thank you. Three things that I noted that, um, I would just like a little clarification on. On this January seven draft, on the chart, um, I noticed data centers is not now on there. And it was on the, um, October thirty-one, right here.
Yes.
Okay, and I think it may have just accidentally been blocked off, but I just want to point that out.
Yes. So depending on how we go forward with this tonight, we would need the original exhibit A to the ordinance, which includes data centers, special use permit required on agricultural, not permitted on R R, R S, R one, R two, R three, M P, M U, C one or C two. Require special use permit on I one, I two and I three.
Is that all exhibit A?
Yes, that, that is it. I'm not sure what happened, honestly.
Can you reference that?
The original exhibit A, yes. The one that you guys got in this packet, for some reason, it is not on there. I, uh-
We'll call it the original exhibit A.
The October thirty-one twenty-four had it on there as Valerie just noted.
Okay, go ahead, Katie.
Um, the second thing is on page four. It's under the development standards. It's the data center site shall be limited to no more than one thousand acres, um, and no less than two hundred acres. And you do have a maximum sixty percent coverage of the lot parcel of the land. I, I think that's fantastic. I would encourage you all to consider maybe making it more restrictive, cause it's always easier to, in a special permit, to try and grant more rather than take away. So maybe just discuss and consider five hundred to seven hundred acres total. Um, and what is informing me for saying that is in the peculiar site, it was six hundred acres and they were going to put in seven to fifteen, three hundred thousand square foot buildings. And that definitely impacts the land. So just, uh, maybe consider that. And then on page nine, under lighting, some wonderful information there. Um, but I would ask if you all would consider, um, specifying under lighting on page nine, that that include the construction, which can go on from three to ten years as they are building the data center sites. Uh, construction lighting can be very disruptive to the night sky. Um, my husband and I went up to the north, the data center being constructed in North Kansas City just before gone. And we were sort of stunned by how, it would look like a, um, the chief stadium there, so beautifully lit up. So it would definitely have a nighttime impact. So you have everything in there. I just wasn't sure if that included, uh, construction or, okay.
There would be any lighting that's gonna be at that site at any point in time.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you all so much for telling me.
That correction was the safety and I didn't throw the words.
Absolutely. They need you, I see, yes.
And I may have had a bright, but see.
That I, I-
Thank you, Katie.
I'm writing as fast as I can to get you all out of here. Hi, my name is Patty DePardo. I live at ninety-one oh four East two hundred and third Street. I just wanna commend you all. Um, I lived at the, at the end of my driveway is where the data center was gonna go, on the peculiar site. Um, and we fought against that, uh, who worked in here, our neighborhood. And I just wanna say, um, we were very, very thankful for the results, because this was literally gonna be at the end of my driveway. I drive out and the zoning at the time was that they were gonna be able to build within a hundred feet of the street. I'm sorry, yes.
That, that property's inside the city of Peculiar?
Right, I'm just, I'm just making a statement about, about-
Okay, okay. I just wanna make sure, we didn't have anything to do with that part, okay.
No, 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 yes, no, I'm just saying, thank you for what you're putting into this bill, uh, to really help set a precedence for other towns to help to let it be their guide, uh, because there was no guidance on the Peculiar Site. And literally to have that, uh, these data centers within, you know, here to the door from my home was just gonna be an in- an incredible intrusion, um, much like what they were talking about tonight with the event center. I just, I was hearing what we sat before, planning and zoning for months and months and months. And with everything that we went through on that, I just wanna commend you on what you have put together here over these past months. And thank you very much for your time and for that. There's no, there's, nobody thanks you for what you sit here and do at eight-thirty on a, on a Tuesday night. But just know that your efforts are greatly appreciated and thank you very much. Thank you.
Six.
Only kind of with a battery storage, twelve foot, um, non-combustible, on a battery storage. There's multiple battery storage facilities attached to it.
They, thousand foot setback.
Uh, twenty foot from, um, this, twenty foot from combustible vegetation. Of page, uh, twenty.
So he's talking about page eight, page two. So the battery storage has to be a thousand feet from the property lines, but that twenty feet is, twenty feet surrounding the battery storage has to be con- cleared of any type of combustible vegetation and surface gravel or other non-combustible s- surfacing.
And it's something you cannot, some of the fires that have happened, that actually was one of the areas, because of the, 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 realizing how close it was to, uh, combustible, which the woods, trees, and then the fire.
Does he say he wants it farther?
He's, I, yeah, I think he's saying it's one, uh, bit further.
This is, that's not, everything else is.
Okay.
It's about a hundred foot, a hundred foot, a hundred foot.
Do what?
Just recommending a hundred foot.
Oh, recommending a hundred foot, okay.
It's recommendation, we're considering, and a minute, uh, for more passes.
So, um, back to Kathy was saying on the acreage, I, of course, I would have to map it out. But with our sixty percent coverage, even if they was able to get a thousand acres, that knocks them down to six hundred acres max coverage. And that was if they could encroach in that thousand feet from the boundary, so that's gonna reduce that in e- even more. I don't know what that number would be without getting on a mapping system, cause I'm not doing it on this, this phone. That would take me long. Uh, but I do think it will still be well below that max seven hundred acres that he was talking about as far as being covered area. Does that make sense?
Do you remember anything, which is reference to being more restricted than, than, uh, needed to be, uh, five hundred acres or a thousand? I thought the thousand acres was solar. That's where that's similar.
They were kind of going in the same direction, but yes, this would be the max of a, of a thousand acres with a max, um, coverage. And that's anything on the roof, hard surface equipment couldn't exceed sixty percent of that, so that automatically is knocking you down to six hundred acres. And you've got that thousand foot setback that has to play in there too, so it could reduce to even less than that as a worst case scenario. Yeah.
We actually have a brief-
Okay.
Okay, uh, any questions of, uh, anyone? Valerie, Kathy, the audience?
We, we talked about a minimum acreage before.
Yes, it's still in here. Two hundred acres minimum.
Right, and about a maximum?
Mm-hmm. And that, that max coverage applies to, to anything within that range. And that the setback falls into any of that range as well.
Good? All right, the chair would accept the motion on this application. Three, one, two, nine.
Three, one, two, nine, as submitted along with the submitted planning board report perspective.
And reference to the original exhibit.
And reference to the original draft dated October thirty-one twenty-two, five. You agree with that? Okay. Lynn with the second, before I got to ask for it. Thank you. Uh, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? Okay, the motion carries four to zero in favor, and I'm assuming Valerie, you're taking this to the meeting on March fifth?
No.
No? Who is?
Uh, we, we're gonna po- we haven't posted it yet.
Oh.
In case there was additional changes, we didn't have to push it up again.
Is our approval premature?
No, no.
Not always needed.
Okay.
So basically now we will post it in the paper for the notice up for the B Z A for them to hear it. And it will be put on their agenda and it'll be put on the website and all of that for hearing notice.
I wish I had time to learn all this stuff. You guys, that, that, that's gotta be fun, learning that stuff.
What, uh?
This data center stuff, that's gotta be cool. That's hot. That's not cool. That's hot. Is there a motion to adjourn? Lynn, oh, it's like all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero.